All right, the time is now six o'clock. And I'd like to welcome everybody to the regular meeting of the Galt City Council for Tuesday, April the 19th, 2022. Due to the continued COVID-19 state of emergency, we continue to handle our city council meetings a little differently than we have in the past. I'm going to ask our city manager to give a brief explanation to the public. Do you want to wait for him? Frank, do you have the statement you could?
Let me read it?
I can read it, or it's up to you.
Okay. Thought I heard him. Good evening, all the...
We are at the statement for you, Mr. Hines, regarding the pandemic.
All righty. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening to everyone. Although this meeting of the Galt City Council is being conducted in person, today's agenda states that we are also using audio-only teleconference options, which allows the public to provide live public comment remotely. Members of the public may use the Zoom link described in the agenda to enter the webinar via audio only, and they should be able to use the raise their hand option to speak when the mayor announces the time for general public comment, or when a specific agenda item is called if your comment concerns an item on the agenda. Attendees should also see a lower hand feature if they change their mind and do not want to speak. Members of the public may also use the call-in feature described in the agenda. You may just listen if you prefer, but if you would like to speak when the mayor announces the time for public comment, you may do so by pressing star nine at that time. We request that all speakers, in person or on the phone, provide their name and address when they are called on to speak, but doing so is not required. Today's agenda states that residents may submit written public comments via email to pubcom@cityofgalt.org prior to the council meeting, which may, which will be distributed to the city council, made part of the official minutes, and posted on the city's website prior to the meeting. Mr. Mayor, that concludes our, my comments.
Thank you, sir. I will now call the meeting to order. Tina, can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu, Councilmember Papino.
Here.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Here.
Councilmember Lozano.
Here.
Mayor Farmer.
Here. If everyone would please join us in a silent prayer followed by a slight salute. Tina, can you please read our replay statement?
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T Uverse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed caption and webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting will air Friday, April 22nd, 9:00 a.m., and Saturday, April 23rd, at 9:00 a.m. This meeting can also be viewed at youtube.com/metrocable14.
All right, thank you. Moving on to item B, Agenda Approval Additions and/or Deletions. Anything from council? Okay. Moving on to item C, Presentations. First up tonight, we have the Sacramento-Yolo Mosquito and Vector Control District Annual Report by Mr. Gary Goodman, the General Manager.
Good evening, council. Thank you very much for the invitation. My name's Gary Goodman. I'm the district manager for the Sacramento-Yolo Mosquito Vector Control District. I do want to point out Marcia Mooney, who is your city-appointed representative that sits on our board and is actually a current board president. So her leadership has been exquisite over these last few months as the beginning part of the year started. She just started her first meeting in February. So this is the time of year, obviously, as we get started with the weather starting to warm up and essentially mosquito production starts to become a bit more, more and more prevalent, and so we wanted to try to make sure that we're reaching out to the communities and let them know exactly what we try to expect for the upcoming mosquito control season. And so our general mission is to try to protect public health from vector-borne disease and specifically with mosquito-transmitted diseases such as West Nile virus, which we've had in our area since 2005. But we also do surveillance, not necessarily control, but surveillance and education on Lyme disease, which is a tick-borne disease as well. So we do surveillance on ticks, and we also do some yellow jacket control as well. So, but for the most part, our major disease transmission threat that we have here in the valley is either Lyme disease and/or West Nile virus. So our technicians go out on a daily basis and essentially look for things like this. Some things are very easy to spot if you're looking at irrigation ditches, rice fields, agricultural pastures, those types of things that have flooded. Anytime you have standing water, specifically with vegetation, becomes a perfect breeding ground for mosquitoes. And then some of the things that are a bit more cryptic or harder for us to find are the things that are in your backyard. So maybe a bird bath or a dog dish that hasn't been dumped out, or an old tire that's filled up, especially with the recent rains that we're about to have, are going to fill up some of these containers. Anything that holds water for about 72 hours has the potential to breed mosquitoes. If it holds it for a week, it definitely can breed mosquitoes, and they're very crafty at finding all of these cryptic sources. So this is one of the opportunities where we ask the public to just try to look around your yard, especially after these recent rains that come through, or check your sprinklers when those come on, to make sure you're not producing mosquitoes in your own backyard that are then emerging and having an impact on the entire neighborhood. So we use what we call an integrated mosquito management approach. The first is public information. We do a lot of, we have a very active social media campaign with Facebook and Twitter and those things, but also just general advertising. You'll hear our advertisements on the radio and television. We do a lot of print ads, those types of things, just to try to get the word out to the general public as to what the risks are associated with mosquitoes and disease transmission, and what are some of the things that they can do to try to help prevent that. Then we have what we call our surveillance program, and this is essentially, we set traps throughout the district, both Sacramento and Yolo County, and monitor those on both a weekly and a daily basis to be able to try to figure out what's happening with the general population. Are we seeing an increase in mosquitoes from week to week or from year to year? You know, typically in May or June, we start to see the spike of mosquitoes with peaks in about July or so. So are we seeing an unusual number of mosquitoes in a particular area? And if we are, then we can essentially mobilize our staff to be able to try to go out to that area and try to figure out why. Along with that surveillance program also includes testing of mosquitoes to see if they are carrying the disease, specifically West Nile virus, but we also test for other diseases. There's St. Louis encephalitis, Western equine encephalomyelitis, and then occasionally when we get an imported malaria case, we can test mosquitoes for malaria as well. We haven't had malaria in our area since the 50s, but it is something that is a bit more prevalent with just the fact that global travel is what it is today. Then we go into our biological control program. If anybody's driven by our facility in Elk Grove or right off of Bond Road, there's about 22 ponds, earthen ponds, that we breed mosquito fish in. And we breed about, or we plant about 3,500 pounds of fish per year throughout Sacramento and Yolo County and places like irrigation ditches, rice fields, wetlands, but even green backyard swimming pools, horse troughs, all of those types of things where essentially these mosquito fish eat the mosquito larvae that are in the water. We are probably the largest mosquito fish breeding facility in the country, so very proud of that fact that's right here in our backyard. So a wonderful resource. Then we have our ecological management department, and essentially this is an apartment that works with landowners, large landowners, whether it be farmers or even U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, Consumnis River Preserve, those types of wetland owners as well, because essentially as water flows onto their property, if it becomes stagnant and starts to back up, then it's a perfect breeding ground for mosquitoes. And so we have some heavy equipment, a backhoe and a dump truck, where we offer services to be able to try to help clean things out and make sure that these landowners can maintain their property and they're not producing mosquitoes, which is then having an impact on the neighborhood. So that's another part of our program. And along with that ecological management, something that's grown in the last couple of years is our use of drones. So we've had a number, we have a number of drones within the facility. Most of them are taking actual visual pictures over land. It allows us to kind of see exactly where the water is, allows us to be more efficient. Instead of a technician having to walk around 10 acres or so, you're able to look from above. And we actually used some, some pretty interesting LiDAR-type filters that really allow us to penetrate through the vegetation to see exactly where the water is, has made our program much more efficient. And then the last component of the integrated mosquito management is chemical control. And so when we do find mosquito larvae in some of these water sources, we treat appropriately with that, and our goal is to try to get them all in their aquatic stage. So mosquitoes need water, they live in water, the mosquitoes lay their eggs in water, and then they emerge as larvae. They go through four larval stages, and then a pupal stage, and then emerges as an adult. So our goal is to try to get them in their aquatic stage, because once they emerge as adults, then they fly, and then they can have a broader area of impact. And so our goal is to try to get them in their aquatic or larval stages and looking for all these types of water sources. But the chemical control also includes adult mosquito control, which is what people traditionally think of spraying or fogging, those types of things, that can be either done by a backpack or a truck, ATV, or even the airplane. And we do a lot of airplane work, specifically a lot more over our agricultural areas, mostly the rice fields that we have up in Yolo County and North Natomas, but we have done some aerial applications in and around outside of Galt as well in some of the agricultural areas. Here's just a brief snapshot of West Nile virus activity in California as a whole. Last year was, was down quite a bit, 128 reported human cases. And one thing I want to try to identify is that typically these human cases that get reported, because this is a reportable disease to the public health officers, usually are the very serious, what we call neuroinvasive form of the disease. So typically West Nile virus symptoms are flu-like symptoms, which we're all very much used to trying to identify over the last couple of years. Everybody's getting flu-like symptoms. So West Nile virus typically starts with flu-like symptoms, but it can escalate into a much more serious, what we call neuroinvasive form of the disease, which can lead to encephalitis, can lead to blindness, paralysis, and of course even death. And so with the human cases, we want to try to just make sure that the public is aware. CDC estimates that for every neuroinvasive form of the disease, there's anywhere from 30 to 70 cases that go unreported, because if you get the flu, or if you have flu-like symptoms in the middle of summer, you stay home, we've gotten used to that part, and then you recover, and you never even go to the doctor and get it diagnosed. So really, this disease is significantly underreported, and we want to make sure that people are aware of the general risks associated with it and what some of the things that they can do to try to help prevent that. We gave a map here of essentially West Nile virus activity in the Galt area. As you can see, we had quite a bit. We had 21 positive mosquito samples that came back positive for West Nile virus last year. The yellow triangles are positive dead birds, so if you do see a dead bird, specifically a crow or a corvid J, these are reservoirs of West Nile virus. West Nile is a bird disease, is actually carried by birds, it's vectored by mosquitoes. So a mosquito bites an infected bird, picks up the disease, then bites another bird and passes it on, or potentially bites a human and passes it on. So we monitor all of these things and then do appropriate control in and around these areas, but as you can see, quite a bit of activity in the city of Galt, which is actually unusual. I think the last time I was here, last year, we didn't have that much activity in Galt. So Galt's always been one of those areas, I think must be the residents that really take care of their mosquito problems in their backyard, but last year we had a little bit of a resurgence in terms of West Nile activity. One new concern I think that I brought up, I've been bringing up to the last couple of years to, to the city council, is invasive mosquitoes. And so within Sacramento and Yolo County or in our area, we have about 22 different species of mosquitoes. Not all of them transmit disease, some of them do, some of them don't. Some of them are just nuisance mosquitoes, nobody really cares for mosquitoes, or isn't really a defender of the mosquito, so to speak. But we're starting to get mosquitoes that are not endemic to our area start to come into, and specifically the 80s egypti yellow fever mosquito. It's prevalent, obviously, in Southeast Asia, all throughout Central and South America and Mexico, and it's now starting to become established in our area here. We first detected it in Sacramento County in 2019, so three years ago, and we've now started to pick up pockets in and around various areas of Sacramento. And the concern particularly with this, this specific mosquito is the fact that it can transmit some of the more exotic diseases such as Zika, dengue, chikungunya. So that's why we're concerned, because if this mosquito becomes established in our area, we have imported cases of those diseases where people go back to an area where those diseases are endemic, and then they come back here, they exhibit symptoms, and then potentially you have the opportunity for local transmission. And so we want to try to be able to monitor that as quickly as we can. Here's a map in general of where we've detected some of these invasive mosquitoes, so not yet here in the city of Galt, but as close as Elk Grove, we have some pocket in Elk Grove where we've detected these invasive mosquitoes. And for the most part, these are brought in by people, because these mosquitoes don't really fly that far. They only fly about 150 meters. So they're not flying and becoming established. For the most part, they're being brought in by people, either in vehicles, or these particular mosquitoes like to lay their eggs in, in, in containers, and so a lot of pottery or people moving, those types of things can bring it in, because their eggs can last for months without water. And then once you fill that water up, then the eggs start to emerge. And one story associated specifically with this is how it was, we think how it was brought to actually California. If anybody is familiar with the lucky bamboo plant, the bamboo plant that has the rocks in the bottom, those types of things, there was shipments that were coming in from Southeast Asia with these, these lucky bamboo plants, and the mosquitoes, the Asian tiger mosquito had laid its eggs in those containers. And then when people brought them home and they filled it up with water, then all of a sudden you had this invasive mosquito that became established in Southern California, and this was about 20 years or so ago. Now it steadily started to make its way up the state, and so we've even found it as far up as Shasta. So it's not supposed to be here, it's not reading the textbooks that say it's not supposed to establish here, but, but as you can see, we are seeing pockets of it. One of the challenges, I think, associated with these invasive mosquitoes is the types of breeding sources. They're very cryptic. They look for small sources, and they like to bite people, and they like to be around homes. So typically, this is a problem for us, because I can't see what's in everybody's backyard. It's easy for us to see the irrigation ditch, or the rice field, or the wetland. Those are very easy for us to spot, but to be able to see in everyone's backyard all of these potential cryptic sources is a challenge for us. And so this is one of the help, the ask that we have of the public is to be able to try to look around your yard, see if you see any of these pots that might be containing water, dump them out as you can, or if you're seeing mosquitoes or being bothered by mosquitoes, give us a call. We typically come out within 24 hours. We want to know as soon as we possibly can if you're being bothered and what, and be able to identify. Is this just an endemic species that we've had in the area before, or is it one of these new ones that we have? And I do want to try to point out the bromeliad there at the very bottom of picture. This plant that holds just a little bit of water is a perfect breeding ground for mosquitoes. And so these particular mosquitoes can breed in just a bottle cap of water, they don't need that much. In fact, there's even documentation of one, of eggs being laid in a discarded potato chip wrapper. So again, very cryptic, very difficult to try to find some of these sources. So we do quite a bit of outreach when, when we do find these particular species, so we go door-to-door, we knock on doors, we give out flyers and information and try to help people help identify that for us, and do targeted social media to the affected communities. So we've done that in Elk Grove and Citrus Heights and other places that we've done it. And so we're very aggressive in, in terms of being able to try to identify, find it, and then keep it into a particular area so that we don't have it spreading out. And so moving forward for us, we are looking at what they call innovative control methods, and one of these is called sterile insect technique, SIT. It's been around for 50 years. FDA has used it for a number of different invasive insects, but it's now started to branch out into mosquitoes. And essentially, the concept behind this is that only female mosquitoes bite, male mosquitoes don't bite, they only feed on nectar, and they're there to mate. And so what we do is you would sterilize the male mosquitoes so that when they mate with the females, then the progeny is no good. And they've done some trials in Brazil, in Central America, in some of the Caribbean Islands. They're currently doing a trial in the Florida Keys, and they just got authorization to do a trial in Visalia in California, just south of us. So these are new innovative techniques that don't use pesticides, which is great, and it really targets just this specific mosquito. So you sterilize the males, then you release these male mosquitoes into the neighborhood, they mate with the wild females, and then again, the progeny is no good, and you've seen significant collapse of these types of populations, which then reduces again the risk of disease transmission. So that's it that I have in terms of information. You can get more information by giving us a call, 1-800-429-1022, or you can also visit our website at fightthebyte.net. So with that, I'll answer any questions that the council may have.
Thank you, Mr. Goodman. What, what's the number again that the public can call?
1-800-429-1022.
So is it like an acronym for those, or just?
There is not, unfortunately. We didn't, we didn't figure that one out, but we did get fightthebyte.net. We, we, we locked onto that website relatively quickly.
Okay. Well, very, very informative, and I just have a question. I'm assuming it's yes, but Mr., oh, he stepped out. And staff's not here. I was curious if we could proactively put this out on social media, on our city's social media?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
The other thing I did want to try to mention is that these repellent wipes, which we, we buy by the truckload, so if you have, as we now starting getting out of COVID, and people are starting to do outdoor events, specifically in the evening time, we're more than happy to provide these free of charge. We want people to use them, because we know that if you don't get bit by a mosquito, you won't get West Nile. So we have these repellent wipes. You can either come by the district and pick them up, or if there's something that the council, one of you are doing in your own district, you can give us a call, we'll be more than happy to drop them off for you, along with some brochures and information for the general public. So we, again, we buy it by the truckload. I've got thousands, hundreds of thousands of them. We'd love for them to be used. So if there's a place for you, you guys can use them, please let us know.
It, it just so happens that in the coming Saturday, we're having a downtown market that there will be a lot of people at. Are you aware of it? Do you have a booth that's planned for it, or have you discussed with the city being present?
Have not, but I'll talk with my PIO in the morning to discuss what we can provide. I think we are, I know we are planning an event here where we will be getting a booth somewhere in Galt. I don't think it's this weekend, I can't remember exactly what the event is. We just authorized them yesterday, so.
Okay. Okay, you have been. So great, I just want to make sure that was covered, because that's, that's a good opportunity.
Great.
And then the, I'm just curious, the breeding sterilization program, that's for non-native species? There's an attempt to leave the ecosystem as it should be?
Correct, yeah. Right now, it's just for invasive species, and specifically, it works very well with this particular mosquito from the perspective that it doesn't fly very far. But this one is probably the largest problem worldwide in terms of disease transmission, because it transmits those exotic diseases like dengue and malaria, and dengue, there are hundreds of thousands of cases per year worldwide. And so I think that's where the focus from this SIT technique has come through, is to be able to try to target that. But for us, obviously, it's not a mosquito that has been, that has been in our area prior to 2019 that we had detected, so.
And those, if I'm understanding you correctly, our native species can't transmit malaria, they're very disease-specific?
We, we can, we do have species that can transmit malaria. We don't have a species currently, aside from the 80s egypti, that can transmit dengue or Zika or chikungunya, but we do have the malaria mosquito here. We have cases of malaria, but typically there are people that have traveled to a place where malaria is endemic, and then they've come back and exhibited symptoms, and we do testing in and around that when we get that, because that's a reportable disease to the county public health officer. So we have the right type of mosquito that can transmit malaria, but we haven't had local malaria transmission in, in over 50 years.
Thank you, sir. Very comprehensive presentation, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you for the report. Just one other question. When residents call, can they remain anonymous?
Absolutely, absolutely. I mean, we, we recognize, we, we don't really care who you are, or where you live, or anything like that. We just want to know if there's a problem. So we've had neighbors call, you know, I know my neighbor's got a green pool, and then we'll go investigate and do that, and we don't, we don't divulge any of that inform- oh, your neighbor called on you. We, we don't want to get in on any of that. Essentially, we just want to try to take care of the problem, and we, we, we are pretty, pretty successful at getting in. We have some folks that, that fight us, that don't want us to give us access, and we have other means to be able to try to approach that. But yeah, absolutely, you can call in an address, and you can even go on our website at fightthebyte.net and fill out what we call a service request form, and just put the information in there, and then typically, again, we come out within 24 hours to take care of the problem.
Okay, thank you. Just one last comment. Maybe this is a myth, or it wasn't mentioned in your report. Mosquitoes that, there's, it mentions mosquitoes that bite by day, which is very unusual. Is that kind of a pretty big red flag if you have?
That, that's a, that's a red flag specifically for these 80s egypti mosquitoes, because one, they, they're usually around houses and people, because that's what they, they like to feed on, on humans. That's their primary blood meal. A lot of other species that we have will feed on reptiles, or birds, or cows, or something like that. Everybody has kind of a preferred host, so to speak. So these 80s egypti tend to live around homes, and they tend to bite people. So when you go out in your yard, then they're active there, and so that's when they come out. Some of the other species that we have typically just kind of hunker down during the course of the day and come out at dusk and dawn, which is one of our messages, to be able to try to avoid those times, because that's when mosquitoes are most active. So if you are being bitten by the, in the daytime, absolutely, give us a call. We'll come out, we'll take a look around, we'll try to assess the situation and let, and let you know exactly what it is that we're finding.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have any public comment on this presentation, Tina?
No written comment.
Okay. Anything online?
No comments online.
Okay. All right, Mr. Goodman, we appreciate the presentation, and we appreciate all the work you're doing out there.
Great. Thank you very much. Always appreciate the support.
All right, next up, we're going to have our second presentation, which is from the Galt Police Department, presented by our Chief Kalanowski.
I have five minutes. That's a subtle reminder, huh, Tina?
I told him upfront.
Yes. All right, good evening, mayor and council. I'm here to provide the 2021 annual report for the Galt Police Department. After I present this to you, then we will put it on the department website and post different pieces of this to the community through our social media outreach and our social media team. The first couple pages are just introductions. A message from me basically highlights the work that the members of the department do that provide our organization with widespread support in the community, keeping the future bright for the Galt Police Department. We personally want to thank the members, certainly of the department, but city staff, the community, and the council for your continued support of our organization in an effort to raise the bar in the service that we provide and keep a well-protected community. A little history about Galt, we won't go into that, as we all know it. The organizational chart, as you saw it in 2021, showing me as the chief with two division leads as Lieutenant Small and retired Lieutenant Chuck Diedrickson, who came back as per diem to assist us, and some professional support in administration, and then our patrol teams, investigations, and the, the staff that supports them. This organizational chart is actually already changed with the promotions that occurred in the last week that I'll talk about later tonight in staff comments. As you know, this last year, we had, and we've talked about it many times, but we don't want to forget, the loss of Harmander Graywall on August 22nd of this year. We are actually on the, sort of the eve of the enrollments at the county, state, and federal level for his loss, and this report is in his honor. So an overview of incidents compared 2020 to 2021. The deal with 2020 was we had COVID-19, so the numbers probably aren't truly representative of everything we were doing pre-2020, but nonetheless, you will see total incidents were down slightly. Calls for service were down a lot, so the community was calling us less, but the officers were actually out there doing more officer-initiated activity. Traffic stops were down slightly. Misdemeanor arrests were up a little bit. Felony arrests were down. This is where I would insert something sarcastic, like nothing seems to be a crime anymore, and so there's less arrest, but that wouldn't be very professional. So, and then criminal citations stayed about the same from year to year. And then on our traffic, so we had a slight increase. Remember, 2020 was COVID-19, so folks are back going to work and at school actively and sporting events and different things, actually living their lives. So traffic collisions were up slightly. Hit-and-run, property damage only, you'll see that a lot in shopping centers and places like that where a car gets hit and people leave. Again, up slightly. We're about even in property damage-only accidents. Injury collisions up a little bit. Minor injuries slightly up. Major injuries up one. Fatal down one. So everything's sort of about the same. DUI collisions down one, and caused by juvenile down a little bit. You'll see the traffic citations were up slightly. Moving being a little less than equipment-related, non-moving violations, and then parking violations were down. I'm thinking that some of that parking violations, we get some at the market, and the market was either constrained or slowed for a time period that, during 2020, so that's reflected. and the market was either constrained or slowed for a time period that, during 2020, so that's reflective of that. The next page shows you, and this version is a little, I don't know if it's better, but it's different than my, my picture looks. Obviously, Walmart has a lot of accidents that occur in the parking lot. Therefore, they're the number-one spot in the community. Then we have stuff down closer to the shopping center here on C Street and the market grounds where we have quite a bit of activity. And then the green are more representative of the onesies accidents that we get. You see the more highly-traveled locations tend to have more accidents, and that's consistent with, really, anywhere in any community. But I did ask staff to put together a heat map, just so folks kind of see where, get an idea of what happened in 2021 and where the activity was. When you look at UCR, this is what we file with Department of Justice about the activity in the community. So we did have one homicide that occurred in the city. Actually, it was in a newly annexed area in the north area of the industrial zone that we annexed that occurred in 2021. So then we go down the different categories. We're even, sort of overall in, by the way, when I say even, doesn't make it okay. It's just, there was no uptick. How about that? For the different categories, including rape, robbery was down in 2020, but the 16 numbers more reflective of the historical average. Assaults were up over 2020, but again, in line with historical. Assaults for firearm were down slightly. 2019, interestingly, there was only one, which isn't generally what we see, but nonetheless, assaults, a slight uptick. Burglaries, down slightly. Larceny, which is just theft, theft from vehicles and different things. Commercial theft was down slightly, and then motor vehicle theft actually was down from 2020, what I thought was, which I thought was interesting, but still within the norm. Cases referred to investigations. Usually investigations has four detectives, sergeant, and then two problem policing officers, the pop team. But due to staffing constraints at different times during the year, and actually, after the loss of Harmon and then Capri being significantly injured, we were down something like 13 or 14 functional vacancies at a time period in 2021. That's why some of these numbers are pretty remarkable about our officer activity and initiation and things. But nonetheless, they had 366 cases that needed formal investigation referred to our detectives. And then for part of the year, we were down with online reporting, but online reporting is a tool folks can use to file less serious issues like stolen cell phones, or lost cell phones, and different things like that without asking for an officer, and we had 29 of those during the year. Graffiti abatement, in 2020, we had about 200 cases costing the city about $16,000. 2021, we had about 150 reports of that, costing the city about $12,000. I'll note that that's, those are measure R costs. There are costs that charge to other lighting and landscaping districts perhaps, or even parks that may not be captured in, in these numbers, but that's directly related to measure R and our activity related to graffiti abatement. Our comm center received 6,100 911 calls, and 98.5% of those calls were answered within 15 seconds, which is above the state expectation. So we thank our dispatchers for their hard work. Property and evidence, just talks about drugs and guns. Methamphetamine and heroin are the big two for drugs. And serialized, we broke this out a little bit, serialized guns, we're starting to see an uptick everywhere. Nationally, you heard some action from the feds about ghost guns. We had 2% in 2021. I expect to see that number go up. We start to see more components and of the ghost gun problem. Some of these were booked for destruction if somebody turned in a gun and different things, but that gives you some idea about our firearm seizures. Animal control, as you know, we do something a little different here. We do not have a full animal control contract with Sacramento County due to its cost. So we have a modified approach. With that, the police department handled just about, well, 496 calls, almost 500 calls, animal control-related. And we held 175 animals, cats and dogs, for pickup at our police facility. And that is saving the city somewhere in the neighborhood of about $200,000 a year for doing this approach versus a full contract approach. Some personnel for new hires, we've, you know, it's, doesn't go unnoticed that we hired Capri, and she got injured last year, so. So we had Officer Dorcaut, Choa, Patino, and Valdez, and then obviously Capri that we hired for officers, then our dispatchers and support staff that we hired this past year, and we've hired a considerable number of folks since the start of the new year. We have four actual vacancies in the department. Two of those positions are frozen. So that number's going to go up a little bit with some sergeants' promotions, but we're clearly out of the dark days of the staffing issue that we had this past year. So, and that, I can't say enough about HR and their support and their role in supporting us and making all those hires happen. And then the key is to retain them, but that was just a commercial break. So for person, for personnel and professional standards, our use of force incidents, we had 14 of those, all found within policy. We had nine pursuits, all found within policy. Internal complaints are those issues or investigations we generated internally based on observations or other information. We had seven of those and nine external complaints. So those 16 resulted in, well, what we would call three formal internal affairs investigations where some, something was done more formally than the shift supervisor or otherwise. And those had three sustained findings, procedure in nature, nothing significant, and those issues have been corrected. Briefly into employee awards. First, I will tell you that you see a different picture for each person in some fashion. We're solving that in June with having a photographer from Lodi come in and standardize our approach here, so it'll look a little better for everybody. But nonetheless, Officer Selvi was our Officer of the Year. Our Dispatcher of the Year was Tatiana Marquez. And then yet again, Valerie Heilman was our Professional Staff of the Year. I think we're going to give her a year off this year and not award her with that. And I know the council was at this, so I'll move through this pretty quickly. And then here's a list of awards that we presented. Our first chief's leadership commendation went to Sergeant Craig Walton, so we presented him with that, really for a body of work that he's presented to the organization over many years, but certainly, we know he's short to leaving us. So we wanted to make sure that the right award went to the right person first. All people were worthy, but I wanted to make sure that he was recognized. And then there's, the chief's commendation went to Corporal Hanson for social media. Life-saving awards, mad DUI for Officer Hanson's work with 40 DUI arrests. And then, of course, we had the critical incidents award, incident awards, which are the Purple Hearts that we award our staff for either loss of life or significant injuries in the line of duty. And here's a picture of Harmon and Capri. I cannot get through this every time, so we're going to go quickly here. And then, as a result of that, there were other awards that were recognized in the organization for everybody's work. It really was a body of work from all of our employees to get through this incident, and we can't say enough about the work of each individual. I'm blessed to have them in the organization. Outside agency recognition is consumed as fire. The Sacramento Sheriff's Office, Elk Grove PD, and the California Highway Patrol, and we honored them at the award ceremony with an American, would, built American flag from a gentleman out of Wilton. Some promotions, that's a younger picture of me. I age quickly now. And then the promotions we made internally with Valerie Heilman to analyst, Laura Satello to lead dispatcher, Linda Brown to evidence technician, and then TJ Godati actually left the police department and went over to code enforcement, so that was a good transition for him. And so he was promoted out of the organization into another place in the city, and so we were excited about that. We have other promotions that we'll be announcing, as I mentioned earlier, that have occurred since then. Again, this is in 2021. We had retirements. Dana was with us for 30 years. Officer Frank Flutie, who got a Purple Heart for significant injuries in the line of duty, retired. Dan Carter with 10 years. Trista Webb, who was with us for 10 years, and also up in Citrus Heights, is actually a dispatcher in Florida now. And Jim Merchant to sustained injuries, so he's out after 13 years of service. Our volunteers, we got them back during the year. We do not have our explorers back in place. That's our next objective. But we did get our caps back part of the year, and they served us with more than 2,500 hours of volunteer service during 2021, and we'll be recognizing them with a luncheon on Thursday that I know the council's been invited to. We have some chamber scheduling, so we're going to sort of have a lunner at 1:00 instead of lunch at 12:00, so that'll work for everybody. And then our community outreach has been a force and focus for the organization. I have an incredible team put together led by Corporal Hanson and Mike Little and Tatiana Marquez in dispatch, and so they, all three have done a lot of work and continue to go to training, and we're getting some equipment to continue to focus on that. And our public trust through professional service continues to be our motto, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Chief, for the presentation. I have a couple of questions. Could you go back to the slide on the crime statistics traffic?
Sure.
If it's not complicated for you to do that?
Tina will reset me because I went to the end accidentally, so.
Yeah, that slide there. So I thought it was interesting. I was wondering why, and then when you mentioned the pandemic, it obviously made sense why we would see pretty much across the board an increase in stuff from 2020 to 21 because, you know, a lot more people driving now, out of the house, not locked down. I'm assuming that's probably why we see most of these numbers up. But I was curious, the one number that went down, though, was the, was the moving violations, 525 down to 456, so it, I would just want to point out that it seems like, although people are driving more, and there's clearly more collisions in all categories, we have given out less moving violations, and I, I would assume that, I know we lost Harmonder, and he was in trap, you know, going to be our motor, but I just want to point this out because it seems to reflect, again, just personally, maybe a need, again, to try to get, you know, some more traffic enforcement at some point. I know this, I always beat you up about this constantly, you know, it's like a broken record, but I just, I saw that interesting stat that it kind of reflects that, so maybe it does, or maybe it doesn't. But on the heat map for the collisions, thank you for, you actually answered several of my questions. Some of those areas that were lit up seemed to be parking lots I couldn't figure out. You can't see it very well on yours, but on the lower left-hand, it looks like that is an, is that the intersection at F and Fourth, I'm assuming?
I'd have, we need a better map on that. Let me see if I can tell on this map.
Zoomed in pretty good on mine. It seems to be that's it, but it's hard to tell because it's so much like.
I'll believe, yeah, is that, yeah, that could be. That's close to, looks like the railroad track, so I'll buy that it's Fourth and Fifth. So. The yellow, right?
Yeah, yeah. And I, and it's, I'm glad to see that, or to know that we are actually looking at some improvements to that intersection accompanying the, the developments coming down by the cemetery, so there will be, I look forward to having that discussion on that intersection because it's very unsafe in my opinion, so that'll be good. And then my last question, let's see here. Oh, on the, on the drug seizure, is it, I actually, I went back and looked at the crime report, and I guess that, that large fentanyl seizure that we have actually happened in February, which would make sense that it's not in here.
Right.
But it's interesting that the, that the drug seizure on this graph is zero. Was, was fentanyl really not like a thing, like in 2021 in Galt?
We just simply did not have, we had users of it, and we've done some lifesaving efforts surrounding it, but we just never caught anybody in pocket, so to speak, with, with the drug.
Because I know based on fire, they've, I've known there's been a lot of, you know, OD situations and stuff, so I was just thought that was weird, it was zero. And then I did think it was interesting about the ghost gun thing being only 2%, seeing how, seems like the focus on gun law right now seems to be that that is, but clearly in 2021, at least in Galt, only 2% of our seizures were in that category. So maybe it will go up. Like you said, I'm not sure, but that's the only questions I had. It was very thorough. I appreciate it. And again, we appreciate, you know, everything you guys do for our community, and, and we try to give you the resources that we can, when we can, and.
No, and that's why I highlighted at the beginning. It's a team effort. City staff's been very supportive of the PD and tolerant of me, and so I do appreciate that. The, I just want to go back to the comment that, yeah, on the moving violation, our ticket writing, that number was down, but the equipment, sort of non-moving violation portion was up. And really, at the end of the day, citations are at the discretion of the officer, and so.
Doesn't reflect stops then.
Right, and then, you know, sometimes it's education over enforcement. If we were, we are not a high commute-in location, so the more citations we write, really, the folks that we're impacting are the residents of Galt more often than not. That doesn't mean you don't, not write a citation, but you just need to be mindful of the balance in that. And then lastly, I would say, I think we were down 200 stops for the year, so it was about a stop, you know, not quite a stop a day less. But I'm doing that with, you know, 12 to 14 vacancies in the organization, and I'm running people to death, not literally, but, you know, they were working a lot of hours, and there was about four or five weeks there that was a very dark time for everybody. So in light of that, not making excuses, I'm really proud of the work overall that everybody's done and pulled us through. I think this month, is this month, there's no mandatory overtime? Yeah, so we're finally not having mandatory overtime for the staff, so we're starting to get out of some of those dark hours. Again, that's not an excuse because folks are working, and officer-initiated was still up in spite of all that. It's just the ebb and flow of it. We will get a second traffic officer over time, but all my officers do stop cars, write tickets, give warnings, and all those things. I mean, they're active.
And I totally agree, and I wasn't.
No, I know you weren't.
I think what's, what's important is what's not being said is that, you know, when you don't have a lot of major crime, then people aren't really talking about that because they're not seeing it, but instead, they're focusing on the things they are seeing, which is, I mean, I personally, although I get a lot of complaints, I'd rather have people emailing me and messaging me all the time about somebody speeding in their neighborhood than saying, you know, what can we do about, you know, the shootings in my neighborhood or something. I mean, I call it small-town problems. So although it's important to people, it's, again, you guys are doing such a good job on the other side, which the graph reflects. I mean, the graph that you showed us, one thing I noticed is it looks like all crime in almost every category is actually down since 2017. So the, five years ago, all the numbers were higher except for one, and so, you know, on almost all category crime in general is down, which, which is surprising because, like you said, everything's, nothing's a crime anymore. So we appreciate it. So again, I'm not trying to.
No, I got you.
shit you bad on the traffic stuff, just.
I got you.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes.
Any, council have any comments for you?
Yeah, I just, real quickly, first, thank you for all your efforts. Galt is a very safe place to live, and that's one of the reasons I like living here. Could you please clarify for the public, because firearms can be a touchy topic, could you clarify what a ghost gun is? So it's a, it's a gun that can be assembled with parts that are not serialized and obtained, you know, through third-party vendors and things, and they're not, essentially not registered guns, and not recognized as formal weapons. They're, they're still firearms, but they're not. Now, that's a. Like a Glock or something. Right, that's a firearm of any type that has no serial number. Correct. Thank you. That's probably a better way to say it. Answered your own question.
So that would also include guns that the serial numbers were removed or scratched.
No, that would be, that would be a different, that would be a crime gun, right?
It's interesting because I read a report, a news story that was talking about ghost guns, and they specifically said, which clearly was inaccurate, that they were, that included guns that had been, the serial numbers had been removed, but that's not accurate.
No, it's not. We've, we've had those since the beginning of serial numbers, and that's a crime to have it with them removed, but that's not the political ghost gun term.
Right. Yeah, the ghost guns are these manufactured-at-home type setups, which are a little different. So, I'm sorry. Any other questions?
I just want to make a couple of comments. I, I did notice the proactive approach that officers were taking this year in the statistics, and I, I think you pointed those out pretty eloquently. And so, given that we were down a significant number of officers, and people were working overtime, and, and I know those types of shifts where you're mandatory to go to overtime, officers can, and not that ours would, but in the business, you find a shady tree because you got to work 18 hours, whatever it is, right? And so clearly, our folks aren't doing that as a regular. That's, that's pretty impressive. I did have one thing for clarification that just popped up as you were going through it in the firearm seizures.
Yes.
Can you talk about, crime guns are guns that are seized because of a specific crime that is related to that gun? But like for safekeeping, what would that be?
So that would be if we had. So that would be if we had a mental health crisis of some kind, and we seized a weapon or more from somebody until they were able to have the weapon back, or we do something else with it, that's one example.
Okay. And I think that was it. Yeah, thank you for the thorough report, appreciate everything that all of our officers are doing out there day in and day out, and keep stopping those cars and giving, you know, tickets for, you know, equipment, because what, what people don't see also with that is, is there's, you know, more that goes, there's more investigation than just giving somebody a ticket.
Right.
There's checking to see if they're on probation or parole for whatever reason, and so there's, you know, crime prevention as it relates to that, and so that's, that's good stuff.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Also worth pointing out, not to point out anything missing out of your report, but this also, during this year, we implemented the in-car camera and body cams, and that is, I commend the officers on their willingness, eagerness to implement that. It didn't, used to be so, that people were so willing to engage in something new like that, and then in addition, the things coming from the bottom up, the, you know, the officers are bringing the employee assistance or critical assistance program, not implemented yet, but about to be the UAV program that's generated from the officer level. License plate readers, again, generated from the officer level, and I think it, it really shows that they have their input, our officers are gaining experience, we're not, we're young, but we're not as young as we used to be, and, and it's good to see both their, their willingness and eagerness and the leadership's willingness to run with their, their proposals, so I appreciate that.
Yeah, and part of the servant leadership requires that approach, and we are blessed to have the staff that we have, we have an incredible team, we all learn a lot. I run the organization, or I lead the organization, but it's an organization of the people that do the work for the residents, and they'll continue to do fine work long after I'm gone and, and so on, so we're excited about the future, so thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Chief. Do we have any public comment on this presentation?
No public comment.
No public comment on telephone?
No.
All right, well, with that, we will move on to item D, which is public comment. Can you read our statement, please?
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the city council on non-agenda items. The public comment section is for the city council to receive comments, except for brief responses to questions. No discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Due to the statewide emergency, public comments may be submitted as noted above via the options listed on the first page of the agenda. Written public comment may also be submitted via email prior to the meeting to pubcom@cityofgalt.org by 4:00 PM on the day of the meeting, which will be distributed to city council, made part of the official minutes, and posted on the city's website prior to the meeting, but not, but will not be read out loud.
All right, thank you. Do we have any public comment this evening?
First public comment is David Herberger.
Welcome, David.
Good to be here. Good evening, Mayor, council members, and staff. My name is David Herberger, former publisher of the Galt Herald and longtime community member. I'm here tonight to talk about the Sunshine Food Pantry. My goal is to share our vision of the organization's future and opportunities for the entire community of Galt. First off, a little bit about me, I've been an active member of the community since I was a little kid. My parents put me to work at a very young age, and also taught me to give back to the community with time, treasure, and talent, if I had any. One organization that was a focus of our family's involvement was the Galt United Methodist Church. I was baptized there as a child, got married there, my mom married the preacher, and I was recently asked to assist in the expansion of the Sunshine Food Pantry. Now, the food pantry located at 571 C Street has been serving the community for twelve years. In 2016, they served over six thousand people. In last year, they served over thirteen thousand people. All through the fellowship hall of the Galt United Methodist Church, the needs, the needs and the services provided continue to grow, well beyond the capacity of the church's facilities. From that need, a plan materialized, a vision. Build a dedicated Sunshine Food Pantry and Resource Center adjacent to the church. The purpose of the food pantry is to provide food for families and individuals living with food insecurity, to provide a place for individuals and families to have access to information and resources, to provide programs and services to improve the quality of life for those experiencing economic and social stress, to connect diverse groups of people, and provide educational resources for the community. A new structure located just north of the church would meet this mission, I can see it. There's a number of things that need to take place in, to turn this vision into a reality, but even a latecomer such as myself coming to the, to the program can see it. I can see what the church, the church's exploratory committee has in mind. Originally sketched out on a napkin, a group of hardcore volunteers got together fifteen months ago, including Earl Aronson, Pam Carmichael, Fay Gaines, Mark King, Lisa Klotz, and Pastor Mary Magga. They have put together a series of epiphanies, if you will, to meet the needs of our community, in fact, not just meet the needs of our, of our food pantry, but expand beyond and serve the whole community through a series of opportunities. The committee has done a tremendous job of getting the due diligence taken care of for the pantry. An engineering firm has drawn up a floor plan that could fit within the boundaries of the parcel adjacent to the church. Elements of this project are going to be explored and shared with the community to gather the needed input to further refine and optimize what can be achieved with the facility. We desire to begin a listening and learning tour to share with community stakeholders and organizations. In order to get there, we need to raise the funds necessary and begin the serious planning. We have split into two groups, fundraising, led by Mark King with Mary Beth Ospital from Cow Waste, among others, and the building coordination committee, which includes Sandy Benidam, Fay Gaines, John Gordon, Lisa Klotz, Mary Magga, Alan Wijnell, and myself. The creation of a 501(c)(3) is underway as well. This is heavy stuff, some heavy lifting, but the exploratory group has, through their passion, put together a remarkable plan. The notion that we could not only meet the needs of the community through the food pantry, but also provide affordable housing for seniors and veterans, and possibly enhance Old Town Services, seems within reach. Again, this is heavy stuff, no, so heavy that partners are needed. If through cooperation with many partners, the city of Galt included, we can turn obstacles into opportunities, perhaps we can braid together the funds and the expertise of many partners at many levels to create something greater than the sum of its parts. I know Galt, I've been a beneficiary of its remarkable community spirit. We look around, at times the need, we find our neighbors ready to help. We know who to call when there's trouble and how to fix it. The spirit of community is the keystone for the city of Galt, and I like to say it as often as I can, that Galt is the best-kept secret in Sacramento County. Whether you've been here a lifetime like me, or just a few days, you can call it home. Pastor Mary Magga can describe in much better detail the vision and project of this remarkable plan that can benefit so many people within our community. I want to thank you for your attention and hope there is a willingness to further explore the project and the partnerships. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Herberger.
Mayor, may I address that real briefly?
Yes, sure.
Thank you for bringing it, you know, to us. It was explained to me that perhaps the best goal of the pantry is to help prevent people from becoming homeless. That is, I can't think of a better goal, you know, so I don't know exactly all the details, but I look forward to supporting you in any way I can.
I agree with your notion that the food may be aspirin for the headache, right? Thank you.
All right, next public comment?
Pastor Mary Magga.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you so much for entertaining these comments tonight. I am here to, to help share with you our enthusiasm and our energy around making a difference as the United Methodist Church and our partners for the community of Galt. You mentioned earlier Mayor Farmer about it's nice to have small-town problems. It's also nice to have small-town opportunities because we all do really know each other, and we care about each other's well-being, and we know, this goes without saying, that we do not have enough housing for people who find themselves on the lower scale of their economic lives, our seniors and our veterans in particular. I'm a very patriotic person, and I know that this is a very patriotic community, and it would be wonderful if through building housing on our two empty lots and a lot that could be within a scattered site development distance, if we could provide housing for senior citizens and veterans. We started this process actually eighteen months ago, asking the question, could we find a developer, a nonprofit developer that would work in partnership with our United Methodist Church and with this community to bring about high-quality housing that would be affordable, which is to say, take advantage of federal programs where only thirty percent of the income that a veteran or a senior has available would be charged for them to, to stay in these, these nice apartments. And so we vetted a developer named Christian Church Homes that has been developing housing, high-density housing for the last sixty years, and we've been working for the last fifteen months with Sydney Stone, the real estate developer, and Lorenzo Hines had a chance to, to meet with him and, and ask him some questions. And so we're here tonight to simply ask that we, we take seriously the fact that we have veterans in our community, some of whom are homeless, some of whom are couch surfing, and senior citizens who do not have enough money to live outside of their multi-family, multi-bedroom family homes, but want to stay in this community that they helped build, that we want to start to provide housing for them. So first of all, let me just tell you that I am not an expert on building housing. What I am really good at is leveraging the resources that a Christian community has to do good for the community. We have those two empty lots, and those should not be empty in the historic downtown area. They should be beautiful housing. We feel like if we have some help from the city in providing what Sydney Stone, the real estate developer, calls leveraging requirements, which would be, allow us to access federal tax credits or other state programs, if we can have some assistance with that, we could be ready to launch this immediately. The Galt United Methodist Church has already voted to sell those lots. We've already jumped through all the hoops of the California-Nevada Conference of the United Methodist Church to get this going and make this happen. You heard about the other end of our vision, which David shared, which is to take the money that we would make off the selling of our lots in order to have seed money for the Sunshine Food Pantry and Resource Center. Supervisor Natoli has talked about wanting to dedicate some ARPA funds toward that effort. I think something really great is being developed here. What we need is to find another lot within a mile to a mile and a half of our empty lots, so that we can have a scattered site development. The plan would be to put fourteen units dedicated for veterans in those two lots right next to our church properties, and then to develop another multi-story development, not unlike Galt Place, with forty-six units for senior citizens. Friends, that does not begin to touch the needs of housing in this community. I think of both of these projects, one project in fact, as being a homelessness prevention program. You know that veterans are among the, the people who are most likely to end up homeless. Senior citizens during the pandemic became the greatest number of rising of people who are couch surfing or living out of their cars. To me, a small town like Galt, we have an opportunity to make sure that we provision our most vulnerable people. So I could go on and on, but I won't, you'll probably hear from me at other points as well, but what we want is to see if it's possible to get, to buy a piece of city property or to have fee deferrals or reductions or a pledge of SP2 monies so that we can move ahead with this. The, the Christian Church Homes has got an architect, their architect is working on plans for that Brewster property right now that will be available at the end of the month.
Thank you, Pastor Mary.
I'm a little enthusiastic about this city.
Before our next speaker comes up, actually, Mr. Bally, are you, is he next? Okay, I'll wait till after you speak, sir. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members, staff. Kudos to Pastor Mary of the Methodist Church here in Galt, who came before the Commission on Aging last month to make her presentation for her Galt UNC Community Project that she has been working on diligently for some time now. I had the privilege of meeting Pastor Mary on several occasions in my capacity as the Chair of the Commission on Aging, and I am impressed by her tenacity to provide meaningful and loving charitable service to our community in many ways, including the food pantry at her church that brings food to the needy of our city on an ongoing basis. One of my fellow commissioners, Bob Wilson, is also a volunteer at the food pantry, and he has indicated to me many times that he's thoroughly impressed by the work Pastor Mary's charitable organization does for the poor in our small American town. What impressed me the most about her presentation, and what leads me not only to support her effort as it pertains to the Galt Community Project, is her plan to build up to sixty senior and veterans housing units, and, and I quote her, "While the potential for sixty units for seniors and veterans across two sites hardly puts a dent in the man, it is a start." I wholeheartedly support her effort to encourage our city in general, the city council in particular, to move ahead with enthusiasm in supporting Christian Church Homes, in purchasing and developing the lot across from Brewsters or another lot that can meet the needs of our scattered site project. I urge you to listen, take her words tonight to heart, allow for open debate at successive city council meetings about the matter, and hopefully decide in her project's favor in the interest of our city's veterans and seniors. Like she says, it's a start that has the potential to grow into something awesome and beautiful in Galt. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bally. So I wanted to comment a little bit about what you guys spoke of, and I think that, well, for one, just to clarify, and first of all, let me state, Mr. Hines, our city manager, sent us all an email prior to the, to meeting tonight stating, kind of updating us on where this was at with, that staff had met with you guys, Ms. Mendez, Mr. Hoffman, and kind of broke down the timeline of kind of where we were at with this. I know this started a long time ago, and it kind of, there was some gaps in time, but recently it seems to have got some momentum again, and I'm happy to hear that staff is talking, and, and this is being discussed again. I think it is important, lately I've been reading a lot about, a lot of articles on homelessness and stuff, because obviously it's, I think it's something that's going to affect every community and the state fortunately at some point, and one thing that was very common with a lot of the different types of problems that I was reading about in different cities was obviously housing and transitional housing and things, but what I always thought about was, you know, there's a saying I, I heard, it's, instead of pulling people from the river, why don't we go upstream and find out why they're falling into the first place? And I think what that means is that we need to be more preventative, and I think to come up with a project that would, you know, again, not make a huge dent, but it could keep, I mean, we don't have, I don't know what the current number is in Galt, but let's just say it's twenty, even if it was twenty homeless, and they're not all seniors and veterans, of course, but if we could make a dent in that, or we could be on the front end of prevention of that and get people into affordable housing, I know that the Section Eight list at Galt Place is ridiculous, my mother-in-law lives there, and I know there are people that live there, and it is vastly inadequate in this community for that kind of housing. it is vastly inadequate in this community for that kind of housing. Um, especially, you know, don't even get me started on veterans, you know, we owe them a great debt of gratitude. Um, so I think we should do all we can. One thing that this council set out, I think Rich and I, um, and the Vice Mayor who's not here tonight, when we first came on this council in twenty nineteen was, one of the first things we did was, um, put together, uh, a program with help of staff uh, for incentive for building and, and doing infill. I've always been very supportive of infill projects. Um, not a big fan of sprawl, um, but if we got to grow, I'd like to see the infill. Um, I think this checks a lot of boxes, in my opinion, um, with not only infill for vacant lots. You mentioned the Brewster lot. I know there was maybe some discussion a while back too about possibly the lot on Fifth and, and D Street. But, um, there is vacant city properties that have been vacant for many, 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 many years, like almost my whole childhood, um, one of them. And, uh, we need to do something with those lots. I want to do something productive. So, I, I, I support this and I, and I know, like I said, staff has reached out, um, today and, and Mr. Mr. Hines has, had said that, you know, there is dialogue going along. But I, I just want to, uh, say to my fellow council members that, um, I would like to see this ball continue to move down the field. And let's, let's try to get this thing done. If it's not money you're looking for from us, then I think it's easier. If it's just property and you want to buy something, let's figure something out. If it's a policy decision we have to make, let's, what does that look like? Bring it to the council. That's all I had to say about this right now. So, thank you for your comments. Does anybody else have anything?
Yeah, just real quick, I've, I've heard over the last year, year and a half, the enthusiasm and I'm glad to see, um, the momentum picking up and some concrete, uh, proposals coming forward. And, you know, that, that's what we need, um, so that we, you know, have something for the, the staff to work with you on and, uh, then something that, you know, that we can entertain. So, keep it up.
Thank you, Kevin.
Rich? Yeah, I just want to say thank you for coming out tonight. Appreciate you, what you said and, and, uh, look forward to the future.
All right. Well, with that, do we have any further public comment?
No hands raised and no written comment.
Okay, and no comments online?
No.
Okay. Well, again, we appreciate the public comment this evening. Um, all right, moving on to, uh, item E, reports by City Council members on regional boards, commissions, and committees. And since our Vice Mayor is not here this evening, we will start with, do we, Mr. Vanderburg?
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing to report.
Okay. Mr. Papinow?
Uh, haven't had any air quality meetings. Uh, we will have, I believe, two of those coming up the next week to report on at the next meeting.
All right, thank you, sir. And, uh, we'll circle back to Councilman Lozano when he returns in the room. Okay, Councilman Lozano has nothing to report. Uh, for myself, uh, other than just, um, yesterday, Councilman Lozano and I, uh, met again part of our, uh, ad hoc committee to meet with Cal Waste on our ongoing negotiations with that. So many, many meetings taking place, so we did that. And, uh, the only other thing I wanted to mention was that I joined, um, a local Cub Scout group, Den Four PAC Two Thirty-Eight, who came down and helped us do some cleanup at City Hall, and the Kevin Ton Memorial was really good. And we had a little, uh, learning session out here by the memorial and it was, it was, it was nice of them to come out and, uh, and, uh, do some community service for us. So I wanted to say thank you to them if, if any of them are watching or their parents. Thank you. And that's all I have on that subject. Moving on to our next item F is our information consent calendar. It is recommended that items one through five be acted upon simultaneously unless a separate discussion and/or action is requested by a council member. Do I have anything from council on the consent counter? Okay, um, I actually want to pull item F four just for a, a brief question. So I will be looking for a motion to approve items one, two, three, and five. And those items are, number one is the minutes of the regular meeting of April fifth, two thousand and twenty-two. Item two is the receiving file warrants for period ending April seventh, two thousand and twenty-two. Item three is AB four eighty-one, Military Equipment Use Ordinance and Policy for the Police Department, second reading. And item five, AB three sixty-one, Resolution Making Findings Necessary to Conduct Brown Act Meetings by Teleconference. Do I have a motion to approve those four items?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Vanderburg.
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilmember Lozano. Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Papinow?
Aye.
Councilmember Vanderburg?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Farmer?
Aye. Consent calendar approved five zero. And, uh, I have pulled item F four and I just had a quick question and, and I appreciate, um, Mr. Hines, you emailed me back in the late, late in the day. I actually just saw it.
Sure.
I got to a meeting. Uh, but just for the public, um, the PD had come and we did the aerial drone presentation and asked for thirty, approximately thirty thousand, and I think there was a comment, we're like, well, we want to assure that's enough. And, and they said, well, I think it's enough. And so, um, but I noticed it's coming back on consent for forty-six. So I just want to clarify that you have, you guys have just decided that.
So, you want to, or you want?
Or the boss, or whatever you want to do.
So I just, I just wanted the public to know, at, at our April fifth meeting, uh, council was very enthusiastic about the, uh, the unmanned aerial systems, uh, project. Um, the project that we initially put in front of council totaled about thirty thousand dollars, and that included two operators. And council, uh, based on their enthusiasm, indicated that, you know, we'd be willing to support a broader program. So I asked the PD to go back and, and, uh, basically design a program that gets them a little closer to their goal. And so they came back with a program that actually had five operators. So now we're not just limited to two folks, now we've got five, and so there'll always be redundancy and coverage. Uh, how'd it do, Chief?
Better than I could have done.
So that's why the, uh, the difference to the X was sixteen thousand.
And, and, and that was specified in the email, but I thought just for the public's, um, consumption that we mentioned that. And I think the conversation going back to April fifth was that the advantage to having more people trained is that you only have two pilots trained because there is a whole process to have these people, you know, be able to fly these. Um, that if there was an incident where we didn't have one of those two pilots on, on shift, then there could be a problem. So the more people trained, the better, uh, deployment of the program altogether, right?
Yes, absolutely. This is no additional equipment that was presented to you. It's just going from two to five operators.
Okay. And again, to the public, this is measure R funded and, uh, tax dollars at work right there. Um, sales tax, uh, initiative work. So thank you for that, for answering that question. That's all I had. Does any of the council have any questions on this item?
Make a motion to move the item.
Okay. Actually, I need to ask for public comment on this item. Is there any public comment?
No public comment.
Okay, and no, uh, hands raised online?
No.
Okay. All right. Moved by Councilmember Vanderburg, uh, which the subject is going to be.
Lozano.
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Sorry. Uh, Councilman Lozano has moved the item, which is the Unmanned Aerial System UAS Appropriation.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Councilmember Papinow. Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Papinow?
Aye.
Councilmember Vanderburg?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Farmer?
Aye. Motion approved four zero, and I apologize, the last motion was, the last, uh, consent vote was also four zero. All right. Moving on. Item G, Scheduled Matters Notice of Public Hearing. Do we have any this evening?
Uh, no, none this evening.
All right, then we'll move on to our regular calendar. Our first item is going to be from the city manager. The subject is going to be the Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty Two to Twenty Four Narrative Budget Report. Mr. Hines?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we're now proceeding, uh, down the road to the development of our Twenty Twenty Two, Twenty Twenty Four budget. Um, one of the things that I like to do in our budget process is, before we actually present the budget document to you, we wanted to give you a sort of a bigger picture, uh, view of the economic environment around us. And we also wanted to give you a view of some of the things, some of the items that we as a city should consider, uh, building into either this budget or future budgets. And these are essential, what I like to call essential building blocks that we have to consider as we start to develop this budget. So we're going to talk about the purpose of the narrative budget. We're going to talk a little bit about the general fund condition, uh, economic trends, uh, discussion of budget strategies, and the Twenty Twenty Two, Twenty Twenty Four Budget Development Schedule. So the narrative budget, uh, both for the council and for the public, is it provides the City Council an opportunity to review and discuss numerous recommendations from the city manager to be included in the proposed budget for Twenty Twenty Two, Twenty Four. Uh, it's referred to as the narrative budget because it conveys in a narrative format numerous budget ideas that, if supported by council, will inform me, um, and, and building the proposed Twenty Two, Twenty Four budget. So the first thing we're going to start with is the general fund, uh, financial condition. So we presented the long-term financial plan, I believe, back on March the fifteenth. And that plan essentially showed us that we have a positive gap between revenues and expenses based on our financials status as of right now and projected out for the next ten years. That gap, on average, is about one point three million annually. And as I mentioned on that night as well, it's great to have the gap because we have a lot of things to do. And so to be a little more specific, um, it's, it's prudent for us to hold a positive fund balance and it allows us flexibility as far as financial management within each fund. Now, the general fund has a number of categories of its general fund balance. And within the undesigned category, there is a cash balance of about seven point six million. There is also a designated economic stability reserve of about four point six million. So all told, we have roughly twelve million sitting in a reserve for a rainy day. And that's just in the general fund. But to give you all some context, the general fund budget is sixteen million per year. So even though we have these balances and it looks like a lot of money, these dollars will only get us through three quarters of a fiscal year if a fiscal calamity occurs. And so my job is to come up with strategies to keep building this balance, but also find a way to strategically utilize this balance going forward. And gentlemen, as I always say, this is a conversation and a presentation, so if you have questions, please let me know. So I want to start with a look at our economic trends. And so from our revenues, we have a firm called HDL, and HDL is a consultancy. And literally all they do is track property tax, um, estimates, sales tax activity, and they also help with TOT. And so we've contracted with them for property taxes and sales taxes. And so they've indicated that our sales tax are going to grow on average at five point two percent through twenty-six, twenty-seven. They typically only give us a five-year forecast. Um, our sales tax is estimated to grow at an average of three point eight percent through twenty-six, twenty-seven. So the good news is that both of those streams are projected to grow. And they're projected to grow at a, what I believe is a, is, is the most accurate percentage that you can get right now. We have.
City Manager?
Yes, sir.
Yes. So I, just, just for clarification and since we're on the topic, it was reported in the last reporter council meeting that last year we had eighteen percent growth in sales tax revenue. And, I mean, certainly we're not going to rely on that. And this is taken into account, past, present, and future. So the numbers that you're telling us are a consistent value that we can rely on.
Yes, yes.
I just want to make that point.
And the thing, and the thing about the HDL, uh, relationship is we meet with them every quarter. So as they get new information about our activities, we get new information about our activities. So that's, when you saw that long-term financial plan, that's why it had the word preliminary in front of it. Okay? Because I'll be meeting with them and, and Finance Director Matt Boring will be meeting with them sometime during the month of May. And we'll be getting the first quarter activity for twenty twenty-two. But as of their last report, this is where we are. And so they not only give us the percent growth, but they also give us what the projected receipts will be for that year. And so they're very valuable to us because those are, those are the main drivers of our general fund budget. And it's nice to have a third party with that level of expertise, actually working for us to get us the best numbers. Um, I've been working with HDL ever since I arrived back here in California in twenty fifteen. And they have been spot on, um, both in my former city and in this city as well. So I, I'm, I'm very comfortable with them. HDL also provides us some economic outlook documents. And so I'm going to give you some information from their economic outlook document from, I think it's March twenty twenty-two, through March twenty twenty-two. And basically what they were telling us as far as restaurants and hotels, uh, that sales for onsite dining establishments surpassed fourth quarter twenty nineteen, uh, as you can all, as you can all, um, suspect because we were out of lockdown and out of quarantine and, and, um, and we were out, out and about. And those, that activity is projected to outpace quick-service restaurants as consumers continue to focus on the experience of eating out. Rising menu prices are furthering the gains. So the restaurants and hotels, we're going to continue to expect them to do well. Hotel occupancies have neared recovery. One of the areas where we can be better here in Galt um, is our administration and the collection of TOT. And we will be bringing in HDL because HDL not only has a, uh, function that allows them to track TOT, um, that our hoteliers are responsible for, uh, but they also have the ability to audit as well. So it also gets staff out of the business of having to, um, administer, um, the TOT, um, sort of the regulation and enforcement directly. It's nice to have a third party do that for us. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I, I don't mean to mess your flow up.
Oh, no, no.
You said ask questions.
Sure.
One of my questions in going through the staff report was, and I, and I know it mentions, it mentions this at the last meeting, was we did a fee deferral, I'm, I'm sorry, um, revenue deferral program for TOT.
Mm-hmm.
I believe it was in two thousand and twenty. And do we have a status of that program and, and then i- is there money out there that hasn't been collected that, um, that we anticipate collecting? And what does that look like? I mean, what in terms of a, a percentage of or dollar amount, um, right now?
So I'm going to bring up our Economic Development Manager, Amy Mendez, who is somewhere. Uh, oh, there she is. All right, she's hiding behind Harry. Uh, so Amy's going to come up and give us a little history. And then, um, and then after she's done, I'll, I'll give you an estimate of what we believe is out there.
Good evening. Um, in regards to the deferral program that we had put in place, it was in March twenty twenty that we had essentially activated the program. I want to say it was approved somewhere May-ish. Um, so what we did was we allowed the local hotels to defer payment of TOT to the city. And so the deferral was in place, um, starting in March twenty twenty. It was actually effective, I want to say, first quarter twenty twenty. So, um, they could have deferred from then moving forward. The deferral, um, program ceases when the local emergency ends. And so currently we still have the local emergency active and deferral is still allowed, um, for the hotels. One of our local hotels has continued to pay, um, their TOT every quarter. Two of the hotels have taken advantage of the, um, deferral and there are, um, fees that are owed to the city. And so, um, currently that is still ongoing. Now, whether or not we want to, um, cease the program, I think we need to kind of have those discussions as to whether or not it's time to. those discussions as to whether or not it's time to work with our hotels. The, once the local emergency ends, they have the following end of the quarter to pay back what's owed in arrears.
So. I understand. Thank you. Talk about the local emergency, but I think we've been down that road a million times. So. Wow. Okay.
And the other thing is that the local emergency, although I wasn't here when it was declared, I'm pretty sure it was tied in with the emergency declared by the governor. And so we're, like all the other cities, are waiting for his cue to lift that state of emergency, and then we'll bring that issue directly to council, most likely in the next council meeting. As far as dollars that we are anticipating, we believe that there's somewhere between 100 and 150,000 sitting out there that we are owed. And HDL is going to help us track that. And then after this local emergency is lifted, they're going to help us collect it.
All right. Well, that makes sense. And again, that's the deal we did back when the emergency happened for the deferral. And I think we need to, you know, keep our word. No one, I don't think, ever anticipated the emergency being declared for this long. But thank you. I appreciate the info.
Sure.
I would like to add to, just on to that, the business assistance program that we're looking at implementing, we'll be bringing that back on May 17th. And one of the stipulations that we're proposing in that program is that any revenue owed to the city must be paid before they, any business can qualify for that program. And so there is, you know, backed utilities as well as TOT would have to be repaid before they would be considered for that application.
Thank you. And I know we will, but I just make sure that we're very far out in front of that so that somebody's not applying, and then they get a notice that they are declining because they owe, you know, I don't know, I'm going to make something up here, $5 from 20 years ago. I know it's not possible, but you know what I mean.
Yeah, and we'll make sure that the qualifying criteria laid out in all the marketing material that we put out there.
Perfect.
And it's not to say that we wouldn't work with them. It's just, you know, that's one of the things we want to make sure that we're ahead of when we go to collecting applications.
I wanted to piggyback on his question. This is more, probably less of a question. I was going to ask you if it was, you know, if it was all in the rares, and you answered that already. But I'm just hoping that, and you said, you mentioned, Mr. Heinz, that HDL will be assisting us with collecting that. If not, I'm just hoping that these hotels have been prudent and disciplined because I could easily see a business, you know, giving, being given a deferral for something and then leaning on that money to get them through a time when they weren't doing good in business, you know, and so then not be able to pay it. I would hate to see what happened to a local hotel. And obviously, they owe it, and it's the law and all that. But I'm just saying, I'm just hoping that they were diligent. My other, and that was all I had on the hotel. The other one I mentioned was Mr. Heinz, and not picking a part of word he used, but we were talking about the sales tax, and you were saying that restaurants, you know, because of the rising menu prices, that restaurants are doing well. I think to say that restaurants are doing well, I think it would be more accurate to say that, like, the sales tax that they're generating is high, but doing well is a far stretch because restaurants, even though they're, you know, they're hitting, they're getting hit with massive shortages. I know, you know, my wife owns a business. We're seeing, you know, some products six times as much money, things that cost $50 six months ago are now $250 for a box of product. I mean, and many businesses struggling to keep staff and having to pay more money. So the fact that they're doing well, I think, is not really true. They're jacking prices up to try to cover. And although it's creating a sales tax windfall for the city, I don't think it's something that the restaurants are really happy about. So I just wanted to make that for anybody out there watching and that owns a restaurant. So that's all I had. Thank you, Amy, for clarifying the hotel questions.
Understood. I meant no offense to the restaurateurs-
I didn't think you did.
Here in the town.
Yeah.
I just wanted to explain what's driving our sales tax. And with restaurants and hotel, this particular category, it can be curbed, this growth in this category, due to volatile fuel prices. The state and county pools, and so these are the dollars that we get from online sales. And so while online sales were strong this past holiday season, brick and mortar outlets grew at a larger percentage rate. Folks' desire to shop in person outweighed their desire to sit on their sofa and go to their Amazon app. So, but we say that with a bit of caution in that the gains over the last two years that we've seen in online sales have slowed. And they expect it to slow, really slow down at the end of '21, '22, with lows not seen in a decade. So we're expecting a slight change in behavior. And so these comments that I put at the end of the sections just sort of let the council and the public know that, yes, we're doing, and I think Councilman Vandenberg sort of hinted at this a while ago, that we may be doing well now, but we've got to keep an eye toward the future. And so restaurants and hotels are doing well. However, subject to fuel prices, state and county pools, we're expecting a slight change in the behavior of online shoppers. And so that'll result in possibly a lower activity. Fuel and service stations continues to experience short-term spikes in tax collections triggered by ongoing increases in consumption and the demand for fuel. It's amazing what $6 a gallon can do for you. However, due to various, and I didn't mean to throw any shade at anyone, however, due to various factors, this sector is estimated to experience a revenue boost over the next three quarters and followed by a slowdown perhaps at the end of fourth quarter 2022 and through the end of '22, '23. So we're, HDL is sort of estimating that this is going to be a spike and that it'll subside at the end of this year and definitely through next year. So we'll keep our fingers crossed there. General consumer goods, again, holiday 2021 record levels. Core retail sales exceeded estimates in January while the February data showed a cooling trend. And so coming off a strong fiscal year '21, '22, the outlook anticipates de-accelerated growth as we progress through '22, '23. So again, these, all of this information informs me as to those revenues that we've seen, the property tax, the sales tax, that when HDL comes back for their quarterly meetings, some of those numbers may morph downward or stay the same. On an expenditure side, and it's not, I didn't go into a whole lot of detail that we, other than that we continue to live within our financial means, we want to keep essential services intact, but also we have to balance the establishment and maintenance of competitive salaries and benefits for our employees and able to, in order to attract and retain, as the chief mentioned earlier, he's done an excellent job filling positions since he's been appointed police chief. And yeah, and so the challenge that both him and I face is how to retain that group of talented young officers that we have over there. So we can continue to deliver these services combined with meeting the city's pension obligations and healthcare service costs. And these are significant pressures on the general fund. Now, we've had conversations about the city's pension obligations. Those are driven and controlled by CalPERS. And so while there may be tools out there that we can use to somewhat mitigate it or pay it early, it's still a debt to be paid. And we could fill one council item just on pensions. And if you desire to do that, that's okay. It might make for a pretty restful night for a number of folks because it's a pretty dry topic. But I'd be more than happy to chat about that. But that's just one of those obligations. That's a bit frustrating to me, our Finance Director and our finance team, because someone else drives that. As far as our reserves, and so we're going to start to get into some budget strategies. So in an earlier slide, I laid out the two reserves that we currently have. Well, not one formal reserve and one sort of undesigned amount of cash. The one thing that surprises us with the administration of the budget is the retirement of longtime employees who have accumulated a great deal of time, sick time, vacation time. And right now, our city policy dictates that when those employees leave, they cash out. That becomes an expenditure in the department's budget for that year. And typically, we don't budget for employees leaving. And so it creates a point where the department now has to be a little more creative because all of a sudden, we have this expense that we did not anticipate. And it cuts into services or whatever projects that they were planning. So what I am proposing is that we set aside a reserve that just sits in the general fund. And the only reason we use it is for those employees that retire and for the payout of those employees so it doesn't hit the department's budget. As that, and we set it at a particular dollar threshold in my former city. Now, this is just another city. This is not what I'm recommending here. But we set that contingency at $200,000 a year. And as we would burn through that $200,000, we would come back in the mid-year and ask for it to be replenished. And so it was always there, just in case. If that city fell on hard times and needed to use that contingency for something else, council always had the ability to liquidate it and use it for something else.
Was that $200,000 like a percentage-based? You know, because you could have a city of 500 employees or a city of 50 employees, and you're doing like a, basically, let's say, a 25%. Is that what you did, the previous city did? And you found, I'm asking that because you found that as a manageable, both with the money you have and the money needed if needed, yes?
Well, we would, I would talk to the HR Director, and I would ask. In that city, HR reported to me, so it was easy to get that information like it does here. But it was, okay, over the past five years, the folks who have left, what's been the average payout? And, or what's been the total payout annually for everybody that's left over the past five years? And so that city had a work, had a working population that was, how should I say, graying. And so they saw a lot of departures. And so we needed to be ready for that. And I'm not saying it's going to be that high here because Stephanie and I would have to have a conversation.
Yeah, that's why I mentioned the percentage.
I have a quick question. And I, and you've heard me talk about unfunded liabilities and what it does to programs, right? If you have unfunded liabilities, to the extent that you can reduce them, the more predictable the general fund money that you're spending on the citizens, the more stable that is. So I would be in support of that. However, and I don't know the answer right as we sit here today, but I would encourage or be supportive of it if we had a robust vacation, I don't want to say vacation, leave management plan. Or our managers, directors, supervisors to ensure that caps are honored. And things like that. So probably with that caveat that, and I'm sure we have something that does that. So, but I just want to put that out there that we're just not going to put a bunch of money away so that somebody doesn't take time off and that we have to pay them out when they leave because they choose to use that as a savings account. That's not really what that's for.
Right.
We provide leave as a benefit so that they can take time off and do what they need to do. And so that's just my thought on that. I appreciate it.
Understood. Stephanie, our, Stephanie Van Steen, our Human Resources Director, is out there listening. And so she's taking note. And she's, let's just say she's very diligent about enforcing her policies.
So, Mr. Heinz, these two special reserve contingencies that you're talking about, these, these obvious, so these would be in addition to our standard general fund policy that we already have. So we essentially have three. We'd have one for our general fund reserves. We would have the balance payout, for lack of a better word, and the one you haven't actually got to, which is for the repairs and stuff like that. So there'd be three.
Right. And for an organization coming in and maybe assessing us for, if we're looking to be assessed for bond ratings, Moody's, Standard and Poor's, they look at our ability to be agile, and they look at how sophisticated our leave balances are. And because they want to make sure that we are financially viable. So when they look into our general fund, and as I tell the accounting staff, when we are reviewed from an outside perspective by these very knowledgeable financial firms, the first work or the first impression that they get of the city is the work of the Finance Department through the ACFIR, because that's where they start. And so when they see these very sophisticated reserves and us preparing and thinking ahead, that helps us, that helps us in their eyes. So I just say that sort of as an editorial. So the next reserve is for ongoing and emergency repairs. Reconstruction of non-city park facilities. Our facilities are in generally fair condition. However, I think our facilities are, Mike, can I say, where are you, Mike? 40 years old? Can I say that? 50? Can I say? Okay. 20 to 30 years old. And so we have issues where we have emergency repairs. We had the HVAC done here in City Hall because there was an issue with the way it was originally installed, and we're constantly trying to fix it. We've got just a number of facility issues that are happening that have been deferred. And so having a repair or having a reserve there so Mike Selling and his team can do what they need to do and not have to come back to council, you know, go through the whole appropriation process, and, you know, I just want to make sure they have the flexibility to do what they need to do. Because when something goes, like the police roof, it goes, and it's usually expensive. And it's usually on a Saturday night at 2:30 in the morning. And so I need to make sure they've got the flexibility to do what they need to do.
So in general, I'm pleased with being proactive in this manner. I'm curious if you're going to be requesting a lump sum out of this year's budget, or is this a buildup to a stable balance?
Well, what I would, what I would recommend for the first reserve is just a lump sum. What I would recommend for the second reserve is sort of a smaller lump sum and then a commitment to add to it every year. And the add would be an amount that I'm pretty comfortable that the city can absorb every year. But over time, that's going to build up. And if it gets to a point where it's built up and then Mike and his team haven't used it, then we revisit it, and maybe we give it a little bit of a haircut and use that for something else. But if it's there and given everything that we have to maintain, this room, for instance, if any of these cameras go out or these projectors go out, I mean, that's probably 30 grand apiece sitting up there. I'm not sure, Mike, that may be a little rich. What, 10 grand apiece? Okay, 30 grand in total sitting up there just in that array. So I wanted to make sure that we're good to go. Again, we're not making decisions. I'm not asking for decisions. I'm just putting these concepts in front of you. If I get, if I see a lot of head nodding, then I know, okay, I could probably pitch that on May 3rd. If I see a lot of head, no. If I see a lot of that, then I'm not going to bring that back. So the next budget strategy is labor agreements. So we've got MOUs that expire at January or June 30, 2022. This is with all of the city's bargaining units. We did a one-year contract last year. The total cost of settling that contract was basically for 2%. The total cost of settling that contract was basically for 2% for staff. We also gave staff a $1,000, I think it's an emergency worker bonus as well, which we funded with ARPA. And, and so the total cost was about $535,000 annually. Because once we raised those wages, the base went up, and so the base went up half a million dollars. We'd begun negotiations with the three bargaining units, sort of preliminary conversations. This focus, the focus for these negotiations coming up will be on increasing our labor market competitiveness, because again, there's that phrase, attract and retain personnel necessary to continue to providing these important services to the city of Galt. And so for you folks out there in, in the gallery, the, the big thing for me is that we are only as good as the quantity and quality of the services that we provide to the 26,000 folks in this, in this city. And so I'm going to try to put the best tools and resources in place to provide those services as best we can.
And as your lead into your next slide, to put it in terms that we talk about every day, everybody wants to see those visible things, the lawn being mowed. But it doesn't get mowed when you can't get applicants for your position. So while we had this, you know, this discussion and we want to, those, we want to make that our focus, well, this is the backbone that we have to get done in order to provide those things.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Real quick.
Yes.
So down here is three bargaining units, but there's also a section of city employees that are not represented, correct? And those, to his point, is vital to help bridge that gap and-
Right. So we have, we have a strata of unrepresented employees, and that includes the directors and managers, I believe, and some supervisors. And so the typical tradition here is that all the bargaining units typically get the same deal, and that deal is also extended to the un reps as well. In that way, there's parity. And the next strategy is the landscaping and lighting districts. This is, this has always been a tough situation for the city of Galt. We've got three LLDs that provide maintenance to specified landscape medians, corridors, screen walls, street lighting facilities, park improvements and open spaces. And essentially, they act as enterprise funds, meaning they're their own separate businesses. However, technically, they are special revenue funds. But we see them as having to essentially maintain themselves. And so the hope, when they were set up, is that they would recoup the costs of the, the services that they provide through the assessments of the residents that live within those districts. However, our LLDs have no or insufficient escalators to keep pace with increasing costs. And two of our LLDs have no escalators, and the third LLD has an escalator, but it's, it's woefully insufficient. And so as a result, the general fund is forced to support the deficit of each of these LLDs. So you've got problems with the LLDs themselves. To compound that, not everyone in the city is part of an LLD. And so due to the boundaries of the LLDs, most of the city residents are not covered by an LLD. And as a result, the majority of the landscaping expenditures are not supported by the assessed revenues. They're supported by general fund dollars. And so this is one of those, this is, this is a quandary that we have to solve. It has been an issue for the city of Galt for a long time. And I think these LLDs were put in place, I think in the early 90s, at least two of them were, and one of them was put in place, I believe, in 2005. And so this has been an issue for the city for a long time. And so in our, in our effort to prevent any cans being kicked down the road, I'm, I'm bringing this before you. Weekly parks maintenance reinstatement. So during 2022, city council authorized performing landscape maintenance services with in-house staff and resources. Prior to that, we had gone out and we had a contractor providing those services. That contractor, subsequent to the award of the contract, informed us that they apparently lost their license or their ability to do business. And so we decided to, do we bring in another contractor? Do we go in-house? And so the decision was made to go in-house. The service levels that were agreed upon is the parks would be mowed twice a month and landscapes once per month and two prunings per year. And Director Solis can correct me if I've got any of that wrong. Council recently expressed a desire to provide funding to parks to allow for additional maintenance to our parks and landscaped areas. I took that to mean that we want to return to weekly maintenance of all parks, landscapes, the landscapes outside of city facilities and prunings. And so I am working with Director Solis to see what that program looks like. We are also looking at a number of alternatives. Should we not be able to fund the ultimate solution? What are some other alternatives that we could use? And I heard from a wise council member earlier today that perhaps the use of drought tolerant landscaping might provide a solution as well, and something that we might want to look into.
Can I, can I ask you a question since we're on this topic?
Sure.
Because you said ask questions, so I, I do have-
It's a conversation, sir.
Um, so, and I think my memory is fuzzy, but maybe Armando can help. I, I wanted, wasn't it that the maintenance company we were using before for the mowing, I think there was the license thing, but there was also like, I thought there was at some point where they actually said that they were going to actually massively increase what they were going to be charging us. And it was a combination of that as well that led the council at that time to, to look to do in-house. Wasn't it something like that?
We, we had spoken to our previous contractor, and he said the increase would be so high-
Right.
That we wouldn't be able to afford that. There was a big discrepancy between the contractor that we had chosen over the second bidder, which was nearly $500,000. Looking back, that $700,000 bid was probably more appropriate.
Okay. I thought it was something. Thank you for clarifying that. So my question, and I, and I don't know if it's so much a question, well, actually, part, part question, part statement. But what I noticed in the ACFR when I was looking through it, it was about a month ago, whatever, that essentially the deficit, so the, the Parks and Rec, it's no, it's no secret that the Parks and Rec deficit, meaning that what it takes to run the Parks and Rec, when it's at full, when it's, it's normal, you know, operations, I would say pre-pandemic, pre-budget cuts, you know, was operating at like a million, you know, million, million three, it would fluctuate, but I'd just say a million for sake of conversation over what it brings in. And clearly, that has been historically one of the hugest negative pressures on the general fund, because we don't have, we essentially don't budget Parks and Rec out of the general fund. There's no piece of the pie for Parks and Rec. We had always relied on the market, so on and so forth, and I get into a long historical thing here. But, so what I noticed, so fast forward, what I noticed about the ACFR is that essentially in '21 or late fiscal year '20 to '21, that budget actually, that deficit actually didn't exist. And it seemed like that was a combination of, and this is, this is where the question comes in, and you can clarify. Essentially, it didn't exist in that time period because a combination of three factors. One, the market did more business in '21 than it did '20 because we had been shut down for a short time, so it did more revenue. Number two was because of the budget cuts that council had done before a year tenure, those had kind of played in, and we had went without a bunch of expenditures because of COVID, and we actually didn't fill a bunch of positions. So there was a huge amount of money. It was like 500,000, if I remember, 500 and change in expenditures that just didn't take place during that timeframe. And then the third thing was that we sold property that belonged to Parks and Rec, because that was at one time. So the combination of those three basically squashed that deficit for that year. But if I'm understanding, and again, I'm not an accountant, but just doing some math-
You're doing very well, sir.
That's going to, that's going to come back. I mean, that deficit just didn't go away. It's, it is going to come back, and especially when we look to bringing services back in full strength. And if those, those costs go up exponentially, and if we have to end up, whatever we decide with our bargaining, you know, having parks workers or low-level workers, which I think the council has discussed, trying to focus on money. I mean, we could see that, that, that gap between what the Parks and Rec and the market brings in to what it's expending could actually be larger than it ever has been. Is that incorrect? Would that be fair to say?
Quite possible. And that's what we're trying to head off.
Okay.
But that's a great analysis, sir. Well done.
All right. Well, that's, that's, that was the only question I had. Just wanted to make, you know, because it was, it was the blessing in disguise that we didn't have it, but it's still the elephant in the room, so to speak, right? But, okay.
Mm-hmm.
All right. That's all I had. Thank you. Appreciate it.
And so we'll be, I'm working with Director Solis right now, and we'll, we'll hopefully bring back some options for, for parks maintenance. And we'll also be looking at, we'll be analyzing the issue with the LLDs. The options for fixing the LLDs, and I'll slide back, are a little more complicated because they're assessment districts. And so this one's, this one's a little more complicated, but we'll bring back some possible solutions going forward.
Just, unless it's not appropriate to mention, what would be some of those? Like just ID-
Well, the thing is, if you've got folks in assessment districts and they're, and those assessment districts are responsible for providing services to those residents, and the revenues in the districts aren't adequate enough to support the service levels that are being provided, then a decision needs to be made. Do we pursue asking the residents if they would accept a higher assessment? Or do we provide services according to the revenue level? Which means the green parks that you like across the street from your home may not be so green anymore.
Or we, or we also, well, I don't think we probably in a position to look at it this year, but possibly dissolve the LLDs completely and do something different.
And that's an option too. But I understand that's complicated too. I'm not, I didn't, you notice I didn't bring it up here tonight because I didn't want to give our city attorney a migraine so late in the evening.
Yeah. And I think you mentioned that, because that's a good analogy. And I think, I mentioned the other day that one of the top three things we always hear about, I think all of us, top three would be, you know, why aren't the weeds getting pulled over here? Why is the grass not being mowed and, and all that? And I think, or why does, you know, I pay, a company with that is, well, I pay my, you know, I see my assessment, I see that. And I, and I think it's important to mention that tonight, just because we have a lot of people in the audience. A good analogy would be, you are getting something, you know, people are saying, we don't get, what am I getting for my money? Well, it's like if I hired my lawn mowing guy 20 years ago and I paid him, you know, $100 a month, if he's still my lawn mowing guy now and I'm still only paying him $100 a month, is my grass still getting mowed? Yeah. But is, am I getting, am I getting as good a job? Probably not. And so that's kind of what the, that's what, that's what's happening right now.
Exactly. Exactly. So we have, this situation, it's been dogging the city for years. And unfortunately, it's my turn and this council's turn to try to figure this out.
Well, I can speak for those of us that have been here the longest. You know, I would have hoped, except we got sidelined by a pandemic, but I would have hoped we would have solved it. But here we are, almost four years in and still there, so.
So we have three LLDs that are underwater. And then we have the remainder of the city, or so we're supplementing that with a general fund. And then we have the remainder of the city that is completely out of the general fund.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
It's not that big of a city. And I would, I should start keeping track as to when people complain about the landscape to get their address versus the landscape they're complaining about. Because I would bet many times, they don't live in the LLD that's supposed to fund what they're complaining about. They live somewhere that's entirely general fund.
Hmm.
You know, we are, we are one city.
Yes. But again, people are visual, you know?
Well, no, but I, I get it. And, and people who are not paying into an LLD are affected across the board arguably as much. And maybe we should look at getting to equity across the city.
I mean, neither house, the house I live in now and the house I lived in two years ago, neither one of them were in an LLD, and they were in completely different areas. So I understand it. But I also think I did a lot on my own time to help pick up the community, so I try to make up for it, even though I wasn't paying.
You get no work credits. I was in jail.
All right. That's all I had. Thank, thank you, Mr. Heinz.
Can I just make one?
Yes, sir.
Just because this, this took up much of my discussion with staff, and, and I wrote a lot of notes on this. And so I don't want to miss an opportunity to, to share my thoughts. But, you know, I just think it's, it's absolutely crazy that we continue, as a city, and, and for years and years, continue to take a significant amount of money out of the general fund that pays for general fund services, to put into enterprise funds, if you will, like LLDs, to help pay for those types of services. When the law says that you cannot remove the money out of the LLDs and use it anywhere else in the city for LLD stuff, but you can put general fund toward it. So my, my, my issue is, is that I believe that inherently, the way lighting and landscape districts were invented as a result, and this is my editorial as a, as a reaction to Prop 13 back in the late 70s and early 80s, that they were well underfunded and were never ever going to be successful. And communities that have, have them, that have tried to look at it and either increase or fee, increase the annual fee or reduce the service, have always fought this whole thing. If it was all general fund money, that, that would be a real easy thing to take care of, right? Because we would hear from those people that live in one part of town complaining about another or, or vice versa, and we would be able to handle that. But now we're being, you know, kind of restricted. And, and again, I'm sure the intent was perfect when, when government was overreaching and taking all of our money through property taxes. But, but there has to be a, especially in a community like ours where we value the streetscapes and parks. And it saddens me every time I walk by a park that has no slide. You go, where's the slide? Well, we don't have money to repair it. And so I think that whatever we do with this in the next, you know, six, seven months or, or even the next two months, as we begin to discuss budget, I think what we need to do is do what we can to keep general fund money paying for general fund things and the specific money paying for that, that stuff. Now, is there going to be bleed over a little bit? Yeah, I get that. But if that's our focus and really trying to free up general fund money, then I think we're, I think we're hitting the, we'll be hitting the nail closer to on the head than we have been. And it's just, it does get frustrating when we have to reduce services because there's not enough funds. And there's that whole education piece about what, what does, how much do I pay for a lighting and landscape district fee per year on my tax bill? And what does it pay for? And so I think we need to get out ahead of that and have some real serious conversations about alternatives to the service level we provide and what the community wants. And that's, that's, you know, that's a conversation we've had for several years, so. But now the pandemic is over. The emergency should be over. We should be moving on and getting it done, so. That's it.
All righty. Thank you, sir. Director Solis, did you, any further comment? Are you good? The next item is vehicle replacement and internal service fund. And currently, the city does not have a firm mechanism for tracking all of our vehicle repairs, the cost of fuel, and- repairs, the cost of fuel, and dollars set aside for the replacement of vehicles. And so what I, what you will see in this budget coming before you, unless there's vehement disapproval, is the establishment of an internal service fund. And essentially, what this fund would do is again, it would track the maintenance, fuel costs, and everything necessary to keep our vehicles going, but it will, and it will also track or be the collection mechanism for the replacement of vehicles. And so my vision is that it would somehow be a fund that sits in public works, and all the funds that are currently assigned personnel who drive vehicles, or if those funds are assigned vehicles, those funds would be contributing to this internal service fund every year. The contribution would be bifurcated between maintenance costs and the replacement of the vehicles that is currently being used by that fund. So essentially, this is a business transaction between the funds. And and in conjunction with that, we'll be working with Public Works to develop a replacement schedule. And so Public Works will work, will reach out to the departments, will use the PD, for instance. Based on my experience, those units need to be replaced every three years. Chief, if I'm, if I got that wrong, let me know. Every two to three years, we want to see those those units replaced. And at somewhere between 40,000 to 50,000 a pop, we've got to make sure that we set up some mechanism to replace those as they're due, as opposed to the chief coming to you every budget cycle, or at some point during the year saying, I need a new car.
So to that point.
Yes, sir.
Would these forward looking funds help reduce intergovernmental transfers? Because you're coming to us, and then you're shifting money around a little bit to cover a, you know, not an accident, but an immediate need.
Yeah.
And then we're coming back and covering that money some other fa, in some other fashion in the future. Basically, what we're doing, this is setting it up in the future, or I'm asking, not telling, but we're we're setting up in the future that we don't have to do that so much, correct?
Right. But I I have to tell you that the mechanism for setting this up is via intergovernmental transfers. Okay? So because each fund has to pay into the pot, and based on the cars that they have, the chief.
So that actually sounds a little more confusing. Well, not more confusing, it's the same amount of confusion, but more more transfers?
Yeah. Well, it's like if you have a vacation fund at home, and you're at home with you and a spouse and some roommates, and you're all deciding on a group vacation, everybody pays in to that vacation, and when it gets to the level where it's time to take that vacation, then you all go. But here, each of the 26 funds or each of the funds that currently has a vehicle attached to it will pay into it. The beauty of this is the Public Works Director and the police chief will know at a glance every year what section of their fleet is being replaced. And it's not a guessing game, or it's not creating angst or agita, because we know that unit's been on the road for so long, we're going to need to replace that at some point, but where's the money? And it's because we haven't saved up for it. And so we're going to figure out a way to to save up.
It's not going to be like central service cost, where it's like a flat percentage per department, because it'll vary per department, because some departments have more vehicles, some vehicles, like Parks and Rec maybe doesn't need their vehicles replaced every seven day, 10 years maybe, whereas PD needs theirs replaced every three years, and their vehicles might be more expensive than, so there's going to be lots of variables, right?
Yes, yes.
Can any of this be funded via ARPA?
That's what I have to talk to the city man, city attorney about.
And it seems that.
Not asking right now, but I'll talk.
The rules have changed, the requirement, right? So it's a moving target in some degree, some respects.
You are, you are correct, sir. You are correct. But yeah, we'll be, where we have the flexibility to use ARPA for some of these, I'll be proposing ARPA. But again, my, 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 you know, my, my sort of, it's all subject to the purview and direction from the city attorney.
I'm willing to say on the record now that rainy day of reserves is going to be an issue for our plans, just across the board.
All right. Understood.
To that point, if if it wasn't a rainy day, if it was ARPA directly spent, but the money that you would use in the future would help fill a completely new fund, that'd be a workaround, for lack of a better term.
Um.
I'm sorry, I went right down the hole you asked me not to go, right?
It's a good question. I think the key is the money can't be used for reserves, I'll just leave it at that level. Yeah. Yeah.
I think what Mr. Vandenberg is asking is, can we just buy a whole bunch of patrol cars and just have them sitting there, and then when we need them, then we just pull the covers off them, and then we use them?
I think the, I think the look on the police chief's face just answered that question Oh, my. So that's the internal service fund, and so we'll be looking at that as well. And increased efforts for economic development. And so with the 2020, with the 2021-23 strategic plan, economic development was a priority and is a priority. We're focused on attracting commercial users to the community, both increase the quality of life here in Galt and reverse our sales tax leakage, which is currently sitting at 3.3 million annually. Now, for those folks who are not familiar with that term, all of the residents of Galt purchase goods and services to maintain their homes, their lifestyles, their quality of life. Some of those items are purchased from Galt merchants based on their needs, grocery stores, things like that. However, Galt doesn't have certain merchants, and so our residents have to go outside of the city to buy those items. And so our estimate is that the items that are purchased outside of the city by Galt residents is totaling a little over 3 million annually. And while some of those businesses, probably the vast majority of those businesses that our folks are going to outside of the city, don't really fit here in Galt, we're trying to figure out which one of those businesses do fit here in Galt, and do what we can to curb that sales tax leakage. And Amy Mendez, our Economic Development Director, is key to making this happen. And so what we recommend is that we bring in a consultant, and we call it a retail recruitment firm, and they would provide dedicated recruitment services for specified commercial properties here in Galt. So they'd actually go out and look at the the dirt and see what works best for them. They'll develop a strategy for us, and then they'll go out and proactively do national recruitment and representation of Galt, and try to connect us with retail brokers, property owners, tenant reps, and other industry players to bring that development here to Galt. We believe that we could procure these services for less than 50,000 annually.
Does that include industrial? When you say commercial, we're talking.
I believe.
That just not retail? Was that job creation type industry, too?
I'm seeing no from. So it's the Paneras, it's the Dairy Queens, it's, it's if we can get a Chipotle, it's, you know, it's those kinds of businesses. Ross.
Other than the not, I mean, other than the notch, we don't really have a lot of areas that like dirt, as far as dirt, I mean, the notch is a big one, obviously, but.
Yeah.
You were saying, you said downtown, I mean, maybe it's just the terminology, but there's not a lot of, I mean, there's not a lot of space open down in like the older part of town, right? And like even in the middle of town, not even Old Town, but like in the middle of town, really.
There you go. Yeah, I mean, this, she's, I think she'll explain, but you know, the property just east of us, if that was developed, that could provide.
Well, that's a notch, yeah, that's.
Well, right, that would provide a lot, and reversing this 3.3 million trend, that's, and we talk about all the struggles with the budget, and you know, I mean, all the good news has been nice, but we're still, in my opinion, 400,000 or more short of where we'd like to be. That development would go a long ways in changing all of those items.
I think the key here is that the Summerhorn property, you know, that's 45 acres, commercial fronting, and that's the largest commercial, highway commercial piece that we have here in the community. We also have the Twin Cities and Corillian property, that's about 12 acres, that is coming up for development, and so these locations are prime right now. We have a lot of interest in the sites, it's just a matter of putting a project together that the city wants to see, not necessarily the developer is, you know, trying to piecemeal together. And so the focus is going to be bringing the retailers that the community needs and wants, also the sales tax generation, the restaurants, the financial institutions. I'm sure there would be an office and medical component there, but the idea is to have that connected consultant who's out doing the marketing for us, who can go and really understand the shopping habits of residents in Galt, and can go market that to these national retailers. Also, the Galt market, I think, is one thing that we haven't really done a good job of ensuring and and really encapsulating how many people are coming into the community on a Tuesday and Wednesday, and how we can capitalize off of those shoppers that are here, and so that'll be another piece of it. In terms of downtown, a few of the consultants that I've talked to will provide sort of an analysis of vacant property in the downtown. You know, we spoke about potentially working with Christian Church Homes on a mixed use project on property that the city owns, which would have a, you know, pretty sizable retail component. And so that retail recruitment would go more towards the independent type users for downtown. We do have some vacancies down there, but you know, there's things I think that we can, the majority of this would be really for large scale retail recruitment, junior box, large box users, if we can get them on the site, but wanting to make sure that, you know, we don't lose the opportunity that we have for the Summerhorn property, but also we have the Twin City site, which the developer is looking to, you know, try to develop right now, so we want to make sure that we don't end up with several gas stations locating on, you know, every prime corner in the community.
Yeah. You know, the 3.3 million, I just, it's a quick math, like $125 per citizen, if you, you know, for 26,000, so I mean, i- it's a big deal, but like, even with all the additional industry added, I mean, even if we developed all that, it would still be very easy for people of Galt to spend $125 a year somewhere else, like you could go buy a car, and that's thousands of sales tax dollars right there. So I mean, I still think, we obviously want to capture that, I'm just stating that it's not as much as I thought. I did the math, it's like $125 is not very much per citizen.
Well, I think when you look at the revenue that we're losing, potentially that, you know, would be part of our budget, I believe that our sales tax revenue is roughly two, a little over 2 million.
Yeah.
So you're doubling it, essentially. And it's not to say that there's not going to continue to be leakage, but we're also bringing people into Galt from outside of the community as it relates to the Galt market or just 99 traffic, just in general. So that really is the focus with this. I don't have the time to dedicate to solely doing retail recruitment, I don't have the connections, really. You know, when I talk to a retail developer or retail representative, a lot of times they'll put me in touch with a broker, and it's a lot more difficult to deal with a broker than it is with the, you know, directly with the retail tenant, and to sell Galt, really, is what we're trying to do, so.
Amy, I I think you made a good point just now, you know, considering we're talking about budgets and where we should or could not spend money, right now, what's what's on your plate? You're a, you're a department of one, and you're doing what?
Well, I handle community engagement, so social media outreach, also handle the website. You know, we just finished the website project, and I've been working on strategic plan, COVID business assistance programs, nonprofit business assistance. Yeah, there's a lot going on, and and like I said, I don't want to lose sight of this, you know, Summerhorn property, I think it's a really good opportunity for us to capture those users. We don't want to end up with the developer selling off pieces of property, trying to develop similar to, you know, the complaint we get about Starbucks, AMPM, and the car wash, so.
Right, and and to that point, if if you could easily employ another person at a much greater cost, so having a consultant that's, you know, dedicated to a certain task that we could be done within a year or two, or whatever, might be a very prudent use of money.
You know, I was at the ICSC conference in March, and that's sort of what spurred this conversation, and the, some of the retailers I met with are retailers that we would like to see here in the community, but you know, when you talk to them, they want to make sure that there's other soft goods users that are coming along with them. They won't locate here by themselves, and so trying to put those partnerships together to make sure that we can put a project together that encompasses, you know, a variety of retailers that would be a, you know, good fit, but also would get us over that sort of roadblock with some of these retailers that maybe don't see Galt really as a market for them right now.
And and that's something that brokers don't cater to as well?
They, they're selective, you know, it's, it's a little bit easier for them just to kind of hodgepodge things together that come their way, rather than going out and trying to put an actual project together with retailers that we want to see. We can ask them all day long, but they have relationships already built, so some of the, you know, deals they can put together are a little bit easier for them.
Thank you.
All right. Well done. Well done. Thank you. Thank you. And so the last strategy is just the anticipation of a earlier midyear budget assessment. I believe last year, we got it to you at the end of March, this year, we got it to you, I believe, toward the middle of March. We're going to, now that we've got a fully staffed finance team full of some very talented individuals, we're going to look to get that midyear budget assessment back and in front of you in early February, and the year subsequent to that, January is the target. So I just wanted to make sure that council knew that that was coming. So our budget calendar, so today, we're talking about the narrative budget. May 3, we'll be coming back to you with a draft budget, and with that draft budget, the departments will be providing presentations of changes to their budget, we will also be presenting a draft fee schedule at that time. May 12, Mike Selling and his team will be coming back with the capital improvement plan and the five-year capital budget plan. I'm sorry, he'll be taking that to the planning commission. May 17, we'll do some more budget updates, we'll look at the other funds, because that draft budget will mostly, will probably affect just the general fund, Measure R, and Fund VI. We've got 23 other funds that we want to make sure we get in front of you all. We'll do that on May 17, and we'll also be looking at the CIP and the five-year plan as it comes to council as recommended by the planning commission. June 7, we've got public hearings for budget CIP and the fee schedule, and June 21, hopefully it'll be a short item, because we've had two months to talk about it, almost three months to talk about it, that we'll have a, hopefully, a quick adoption of the 2224 annual operating budget. And and like I said, the staff and I will collapse after that meeting's over, because it'll be, it'll be a pretty, pretty intense grind up until that point.
All right, well, we, I appreciate the presentation, and I don't, I think there'll be plenty of time for us to ask additional questions, at least I'm not going to ask any additional. I do appreciate the, just real quick, though, the, the verbiage on each of the sections where it, it takes what I think is a cautious, is a good word, it it kind of mentioned, like we're taking a cautious approach, like here's what we know now, but things are fluid, because again, it's a lot of uncertainty, I think. So anyways.
And so, and so Mayor, if if you can indulge me, there's one thing I wanted to add. We are currently in the middle of a campaign for Get Involved Galt, which is an online survey where we're asking for feedback from Galt's residents, and I'll be happy to provide a more detailed report or a detailed presentation on that at a future council meeting. But Get Involved Galt is the second layer of community input that we've actually solicited over the past few months. In fall of 2021, we also did a interactive community engagement survey, this was done with professional pollsters and professional research staff, and I just wanted to just say that the residents of that first survey identified the local service needs and priorities that they found the most important, and I'm going to sort of go down the.
of go down the list. And this is not in any priority order. But what we found in our fall survey, as the important priorities are protecting clean local drinking water sources, retaining and attracting qualified police officers, maintaining 911 emergency response, preventing property crimes like thefts and burglaries, maintaining safe places for children to play, keeping public areas and parks healthy, safe, and clean, preventing the closure of neighborhood parks, long-term approaches to managing growth and development. So, those were the priorities from the fall survey. Again, we have another survey out right now, and we'll be using the results of both surveys to inform us as to what the community priorities are for this budget. And you'll start to see, I mean, you actually saw it tonight with the LLDs and the parks and the labor. These are, we're already sort of baking these, these priorities into the budget.
All right. Thank you for the info. Does any of the council have any questions for Mr. Heinz before we move on?
No, I just, real quick comment. Thank you for putting this together. You know, it's, it's, it's good to have all of this kind of up front and give us some time to kind of gnaw on it and speak with folks about different pieces. And so, I appreciate the work that went into this and, and look forward to the next couple of months and, and having that, that, you know, the public input as well as our input. So, thank you.
My pleasure, sir.
All right. Do we have any public comment on this item, Tina?
No public comment.
And no, no comment online?
Uh, no comment.
All right. Well, with that, we will move on to our next regular calendar item, which is going to be from the Parks and Recreation Department, Item Two. The subject is introduced by title and waive the reading of ordinance to amend section 12.020 of the Galt Municipal Code regarding definitions. Mr. Solis?
Attorney General, Mayor, and City Council. Today, we're going to be bringing you basically a cleanup of the municipal code to ensure clarity to staff and public. The proposed ordinance is a definition change only, which would allow for consistency and clarity in ensuring the parks definition. Basically, what we're adding is our community centers, parking lots, to, to be included as a park area. So, the recommendation today would be to introduce by title only and waive first reading of an ordinance amending section 12.12.020 of the Galt Municipal Code entitled Definitions: Modifying the Park Definition to Ensure It Includes All Park-Related Property. And I'd be happy to answer any questions, but I'm sure I will refer them to our attorney.
All right. Well, I read the staff report, it's pretty straightforward, and spoke to Frank about it a little bit, too. Does any of the council have any questions for Mr. Solis regarding this item? All right. Do we have any public comment on this item?
No public comment.
All right. And no comment online, I assume?
No.
All right. Well, with that, I'll be looking for a motion to introduce by title only, waive first reading of an ordinance amending section 12.12.020 of the Galt Municipal Code entitled, quote, "Definitions: Modifying the word, quote, 'park' definition to ensure it includes all park-related property." I'll move that. Moved by Councilmember Lozano and seconded by myself. Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Papino?
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Farmer?
Aye.
Approved four to zero. Our second item is also going to be from Parks and Recreation. It's going to be the City of Galt Special Events Sponsorship Program, preview fiscal year 2022 through 23. Mr. Solis?
Attorney General, Mayor, and City Council. In 2017, the City of Galt created a special event sponsorship program. The purpose of the sponsorship policy is to prevent, uh, to set forth guidelines and criteria governing the granting of issuance of City of Galt funds or in-kind services for the purposes of supporting local festivals, special events, and community projects or programs. This year, we had eight applications for the sponsorship from the city, which would include the Galt FFA Farm-to-Fork Dinner, the Class Reunion through Galt High School, Liberty Ranch Homecoming Parade, LaHeim Trick-or-Treat on Fourth, the Galt Chamber Commerce Home and Auto Show, and the Galt Chamber Commerce Wine Beer and Food Tasting, the Chamber of Commerce Bridle and Event Showcase, and Galt High School Every 15 Minutes. As you can see, the sponsorship cost in the third column, those are hard costs to the city. That means that that does not include any staff time. Like myself, I would be considered a soft cost. I would not be included in that cost. It would be for overtime personnel only or anybody we would have to call in that isn't actually doing one of their duties. So, to go over the sponsorship policy and objectives, it is to promote the City of Galt as a desirable place to live, promote the City of Galt as a visitor destination, enhance quality of life, advance the city's commitment and pride to being a multicultural community, encourage development of neighborhood identity and pride, promote culture and artistic awareness among the citizens, citizenry, and aligns with the City of Galt mission statements and/or strategic plans. So, that's what those eight events should be doing. Our recommendation is to review the eight special event sponsorship requests for fiscal year 2023, provide direction to staff regarding the events, monetary amounts, and in-kind contributions. That's what we're going to ask in two weeks. I want, I want you to understand that we are not asking you to make a decision today. We have invited the people that have applied for these grants to come forth, tell you about their event, and then next week, excuse me, in two weeks, we will ask you to provide direction regarding the sponsorship request. I apologize, Jackie was supposed to be here to present this. She called in sick, and if you didn't know, we lost Jackie Garcia, our special events manager. She's taken another job, another full-time job, so we're kind of going back to need to retain.
Wow. Sorry to hear that.
So, we, we actually have people here that would like to address you, if you'd like to do that, or if I, I can answer any questions right now, I'd be happy to.
Can I, Mr. Mayor, can I just ask a question? I apologize, Armando. We, we had lots of email back and forth today about everything, but I just, I just wanted to ask this quick question. I, I think all the events are worthy of sponsorship at whatever level we decide. They're good for the community, and quite honestly, not quite $11,000 is a drop in the bucket for all the things they do. I just had a question on that slide, the graph slide. Vertif, go back to that. So, I'm, I'm just going to point out two events, just for clarity. So, there are, let's just take, for instance, the Class Reunion Dinner, which is the second one. It's $520, and it's for security services. I totally understand why they have to have security services, probably for beverages that they're serving, right?
Correct.
Understand that. That's, that is taking place at the Littleton Center.
Correct.
And then, we have an event. For instance, the Chamber Bridle and Event Showcase, which is also at the Littleton Center, and it says that it's $650 sponsorship cost, and that's for facility rental waiver. Why wouldn't we, and we don't have to, I'm sure there's a great explanation for it, but why wouldn't we include, in that first one I mentioned, the $650, or are they paying that?
So, all nonprofits get one free rental per year. So, depending on what number that is, the waiver for the facility rental for the, the class reunion is in there, that cost is strictly for security services.
So, I understand the one time per year, and I think it should be more, but that's for another day. But that still doesn't make sense to me because in one instance, we are waiving the fee, and in another, we're not. So, I, I don't think the Class Reunion Dinner has more than one application.
Correct. But the, the chamber has more than one application. That's why we're waiving the fees on their request.
So, let me just ask a more simple question, I guess. I don't want to make this too confusing because it's not a big deal. I just want to make sure that we're accurately putting sponsorship costs up there. The Class Reunion Dinner group has asked for a fee waiver for the facility rental and for security services, I believe. Why don't we have it at $1,170 for a sponsorship cost?
The way, the way we calculated is that they were going to get the waiver regardless, so we considered that a soft cost, not a hard cost. We didn't include it in there because even if you didn't approve this, they would still get that $500 waiver. It, it's more of a soft cost than a hard cost. Only thing listed here are the hard costs to us of what you're waiving.
Because if, see, another organization came along and had one of their free, another nonprofit came along and rented the facility and got a free waiver, it wouldn't fall under the event sponsorship. So, this is only talking about things outside that free rental, I think. But your question is, why is the other one showing?
Well, yeah, we're saying we're waiving, and again, I don't mean, we could take this offline, too, but I, I, we're saying that we're waiving a fee for facility rental in one instance, and then we're not even acknowledging it in the other instance where I believe they are getting a facility waiver, rental waiver.
What we should have did is listed a hard cost column and a soft cost column so you could see both, and we didn't.
Okay. Well, it's coming back in two weeks. That's plenty of time for me to wrap my...
And I'll, I'll update the chart so you can see it clear.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Armando, would it be possible, because unless I'm missing it, that particular slide right there where it shows the costs that everybody's asking for is not in the staff report. It only shows a list of the people that are asking, and it, well, I'm sorry, it has their individual applications. If you look at each one, it says what they're asking, but it doesn't have that page, which is very convenient. So, maybe if we can have that prior to next, or whenever this comes back or something, it'd be great.
Okay. We'll add that to that.
Anybody have any other questions for Armando before he lets any of the folks that are here who want to speak do so? Does that conclude your presentation, sir?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there anybody? Go ahead.
I'm, I've been told that we would have a representative from LaHeim, the Chamber, and Farm-to-Fork.
And alumni.
Okay? If you'd like to, would you like me to?
Yeah, absolutely. Go ahead.
Uh, LaHeim? And then a rep from the Chamber, then is there Farm-to-Fork? No. And alumni, please.
Good evening, council. I'm Gil Weber, representing LaHeim of Galt. The event I'm proposing is, would be our third annual Trick-or-Treat on Fourth Street. We did it in 2020 when the pandemic hit, and we were trying to figure out a way to involve the Old Town Galt in the community event since the extravaganza was canceled. The event turned out to be very successful. We figure we serviced probably about 500 kids who came down. The event was a blast. We had a lot of fun. And in 2021, we did it again. The event was even more successful. And in talking about doing the event again in 2022, it was brought to my attention that we had kids crossing the streets, we had people milling around and stuff, and it was brought up that maybe we should consider closing the street completely and inviting a lot more businesses to set up in the parking stalls that are there, and also maybe inviting some car clubs to join in with us and possibly servicing anywhere between 500 to 1,000 kids. The event, like I said, is a lot of fun. It was probably one of the, to me, it was one of the better events we had in 2020 and 2021 because we had nothing else going on, and this was a totally outside event. I think it brought a lot of business to Old Town Galt. I think the families and people had a lot of fun, and I would like to continue it and to grow it. And I think it would be safer if we were able to close the streets to have the event instead of just having the kids milling around, and we can make the event a lot bigger. So, basically, the street closures I'm asking for would be the ones we use for the extravaganza. It would be from B Street to E Street, and then closing down C Street from the railroad tracks to probably the alley that's between Fourth and Fifth, or we could push it all the way to, to Fifth Street. But the alley would probably be sufficient because that would allow for emergency vehicles to enter the facility, the area if we needed to. So, anybody have any questions?
Any questions for Gil? No? All right.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Gil.
Mayor and council, isn't it great that we're even talking about events? I think this is wonderful. And I concur with Ms. Weber that, yes, that event was awesome, the last two. So, we're before you as a chamber, we'd like to, again, join with the city with the Wine Beer and Food Festival that coincides with the Winter Bird Festival. So, that's just kind of a joint event that we do together. One of the things that has been difficult for some of our businesses, especially in the service industry, is getting the word out. A lot of them don't have necessarily street fronts, and so, a bridal show and a home and auto show was kind of the answer that we brought. We had a lot of, we have a lot of service providers within our city, with city business, business licenses and stuff, and this was a way to showcase them and be able to give them a temporary business front. The home and auto show, we are already in, planning for that, and we're actually getting really excited because we've had a lot of new ideas come in, and it sounds like it's going to be bigger than what we thought it was going to be. We're really excited about it. Should bring in a lot of people. We have a couple of advertising opportunities to reach outside of our city, so we hope to bring in a lot of participants or attendees to the event. So, hopefully, maybe, well, Amy left the room, we can figure out how to capture those people to stay in town to do other things while they're here. On that note, that's pretty much all, and I can answer any questions, but I did want to kind of jump back to something that Amy said when she was up here earlier. She talked about the ARPA program, and I would like to happily report to you, since I was up here last time, that the chamber did meet with Ms. Mendez. We had a great meeting. We're pretty excited about the program that the city is trying to put together for that ARPA funding for the businesses. I think they still have some tweaking to do. We will discuss it with our board tomorrow at our meeting. So, we're pretty excited about it and really grateful that staff has spent the time and energy to help us out. So, any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Rodriguez? No? All right. Thank you.
My name's Erin Sullivan, and I'm representing the Galt High Alumni Association. I am their new president, so a lot of this is new to me, but very exciting. The sponsorship cost, yeah, we're asking to get the $520 covered for the security, but also, I want to take a minute just to kind of tell a little bit about the Alumni Association and what we do, what we give back for. We have two main goals, pretty intertwined, because the first one, we hold our dinner. Annually, we do the one dinner, and that helps reconnect people that have graduated. Not just graduates, people who have even attended Galt High for a small period of time, even spouses who did not attend Galt High, obviously, we want them coming. It's considered an all-class reunion dinner, and it's, they say, you know, the last 100-plus years, everybody who's been there, they've, I think they said 37 years is how long that they've been doing it. The second goal is to raise funds that they disperse as scholarships to the students. The annual dinner has been at the Littleton Center for the past several years. They started out with the glue, the band from Liberty and Galt High School comes in, they play Galt High School fight songs, the march, and the alma mater. We do raffle baskets that we sell to bring in more funding, and the class that celebrates their 50th reunion every year is honored there as well. The Galt High football team has participated by setting up and breaking down tables and chairs, which is really exciting because I don't know if you guys follow the Galt High... um, which is really exciting because I don't know if you guys follow the Galt High School, uh, football team much, but it sounds like they've got some new stuff going on over there. So I will be personally reaching out to that coach to see how much better of a volunteer kind of thing we can have going on with the kids. Um, and then Liberty Ranch helps coordinate the welcoming, the selling tickets and serving the guests. Um, the dinner's catered by Galt High graduates, the Johnson family, and, um, we have set out yearbooks, memorabilia, old trophies on display. It's really cool. We invite you guys all to come. It's, it's kind of taken on a form where it's more a community event because we're really reaching out and the purpose is to get in the funding to give to the students for the scholarships. Um, we have awarded scholarships as much as ten thousand dollars in one year. Um, even through the pandemic, though they couldn't have a dinner, the alumni and families still were able to, um, give out scholarships of around six thousand dollars. In the past, the city has generously donated to our association the amount it would cost for the security guards at the event. And that allows us more money to put back for the scholarships. Obviously, five hundred and twenty dollars, that's a, that's a scholarship in itself for a student. Um, so we, I'm here to seek approval for the funds this year. It is, uh, through the generous donation that we are able to fund more scholarships and help propel them into higher education. Um, as an association, it's our hope that these students will become productive citizens and someday return back home to help out. Um, I will say my daughter received one of the biggest scholarships last year and she does come back and help out. Um, so it's pretty cool. Like, the kids really come back for that. So it's special to keep this going and going. That's it. Do you guys have any questions?
Yeah, wh- when is the event, the all-class?
It's October first. Um, I, I think we're going to send out soon, probably, uh, save the date.
So the fifty-year would be class of seventy-two this year?
Yes.
That's my mom's year, I think.
Oh, good. Have her get ahold of us.
No, I was born, I was born in seventy-two.
I'm, I'm not that far away from that. That's scary.
It's, it's a lot of fun. If you guys haven't come, just come, you know, i- in, in Mean Gold with everybody. It's so nice to see people that haven't gotten together for so many years to enjoy each other's company. It's a really, really good time. Yeah.
Well, thank you. Um, thank you for your presentation information. Do you have any questions? No?
I would just like to say to, to everybody, you know, thank you for being proactive and, and helping to make this a great community to live in. I appreciate it. Look forward to helping or supporting all those in some fashion.
Thank you, guys.
So if you have no other questions, uh, take the information. We'll provide, we'll, uh, fix this column here, uh, to be a little clearer for next, uh, council meeting.
And it is in my, it is in the staff report.
Okay.
I, I didn't scroll to the very end, so it isn't there. So my apologies.
And then, uh, may I just point out before I sit down that, uh, both my staff reports were quicker than both Lorenzo's and, uh, the chief's combined. So have a good night.
All right, thank you. Do you have any public comment on this item, Tina?
No public comment.
No hot comment online?
No.
All right. Well, moving on to the last item, uh, from our regular calendar, friends from the Public Works Department, subject is going to be the award of construction contract for two thousand twenty-two Gora Aquatic Center Pool Heater Replacement Project, CIP five-three-I. Mr. Selling? So you don't think Mr. Selling is in here at the moment, so we'll, uh, take a pause for a second here while we're waiting for him. No problem. We're, uh, taking a little intermission so a couple of council members can. Okay, just give Councilor Papinow just a moment here. Come back. Just for those watching at home, while we're on this intermission, should you want to comment on this item, you may press star nine on the phone. Is that right, Tina? Star nine?
Yes.
Yeah, or if you're in the chambers, you need to fill out a speaker sheet, back corners of the room, bring it forward to the clerk. All right. Thank you, everybody, for bearing with us. Mr. Selling, may proceed.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and fellow council members. Mike Selling, your Public Works Director. Uh, this item is to award a construction contract for replacement of the pool heaters at the Gora Aquatic Center. Little background, the existing heaters were installed back in nineteen ninety-eight when the pool was built and are effectively past their useful life. Last fall, the Air District inspected the facility and found that there were no permits on file and that the heaters, uh, due to their age, could not meet current emissions standards. The Air District issued an order for the city to comply and noted potential fines from five to ten thousand dollars per day of use. City staff expedited replacement of the heaters with the intent to have them installed before the pool season opens and avoid penalties. Through subsequent discussions between Park Staff and the Air District, the Air District allowed the city to operate the existing heaters at reduced temperatures for the pool and agreed to limit the penalty to approximately five thousand dollars if the old heaters were removed by November first. So a couple of pictures here. One's an exterior shot, uh, on the lower left. And basically, uh, what I would point out to you, you can see the three exhaust vents up there. And, uh, and then on the upper right, uh, the picture is the interior shot of the existing three heater units. Uh, you can see that, uh, that they're old, they take up a lot of space. Uh, the size of the, uh, the exhaust vents, as you can see, are rather large. And the, it's probably kind of hard to see in that picture, but, uh, kind of back in the shadows, there's a whole lot of piping and electrical conduit, uh, whatnot that serves the heaters. And much of this, uh, uh, what you see in these pictures, particularly on the inside there, uh, needs to be removed as part of this project. Little more detail on what the, uh, the project work entails. Uh, the existing heaters and exhaust vents, along with, uh, much of the piping and electrical, will need to first be removed. And then due to the improved efficiency of the new heaters, only two will be needed to replace the existing three that you saw in that picture. The rest of the work includes replumbing, new electrical, new ventilation, which will be smaller due to the efficiency of the new units, and then the roof repair due to the smaller vents. As I touched on, uh, the new units are substantially more efficient, which is expected to lower energy costs. Will also improve the air quality due to the lower emissions and will require less ongoing maintenance that should result in some additional cost savings as well. The project is a hundred percent grant funded with the city using some remaining Prop sixty-eight funds, about a hundred ninety-four thousand. And then ARPA is comprising the rest of the funding, about a hundred and twenty-nine thousand. So while the project was out to bid, uh, one vendor contractor, Aqua Source, disputed the city's licensing specification for a Class B, which is a general building contracting license. Aqua Source has a C fifty-three or swimming pool license. And based on the multidisciplinary nature of the work, uh, that I've noted, uh, the city's intent was to maximize the number of potential bidders and noted that Aqua Source could still bid the project as a subcontractor. Additionally, given the initial intended schedule to complete the work before the pool opened and avoid significant potential fines from the Air District, the city declined, uh, to change the licensing specification at that time. Though the urgency changed later through the discussions between Parks and Rec and the Air District reps, which I also noted. City staff did meet with Mr. Ibarra of Aqua Source two times, uh, that I was present. Uh, first on February tenth and then second time, uh, on March fourteenth, to explain, uh, Public Works' approach and process and respond to his, uh, email of, uh, February twenty-eighth, which had several, uh, claims in it which, uh, we deemed to be ac- inaccurate or misleading. However, despite discussing these items, no resolution resulted. Staff did contact another C fifty-three contractor, which Mr. Ibarra provided to help support his position. And that contractor noted that he is the supplier of the heater units to the Class B contractor, uh, who the, who bid our project. Uh, this is something that Aqua Source, uh, could have done as well, I would believe. I want to note that the public agencies, uh, have full latitude to scope, schedule and spec public contracts. Staff review the city's process with the city manager and the city attorney and stand by the process followed. So staff's recommendation therefore is to award the contract to Tricon. Staff reviewed Tricon's bid and determined it to be responsive and responsible. Tricon has been licensed for twenty-seven years, has completed several pool projects, including replacement of heaters similar to this, and has a clean record with the Better Business Bureau and the Contractor State Licensing Board. Should the council wish to consider other options to staff's recommendation, they would include rebidding the project. That would be no change to the scope or the schedule. Or a second option would be to combine this heater, uh, replacement project with a separate project that we currently have, uh, planned to replaster the main competition pool. I want to make sure that the council's aware that either option, uh, will likely result in higher costs to the city, given the current inflationary economic climate and continuing supply chain issues. Also, there could be a greater potential for delay due to supply chain or labor shortages, which we've, uh, all heard about in the news, or potentially other unforeseen issues, uh, including, uh, uh, possible additional enforcement action from the Air District. So, Mr. Mayor and council members, this concludes my presentation. I'm not sure if Mr. Clarkson is on the phone or not. Uh.
No, he's not.
Okay. So I am available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Um, I'll start off with just one question. Can you bring the back, the last slide up, uh, Mike?
Yeah.
The, um, the top bullet points there, um, the, under the, where it says award contract to Tri- to Tricon, successful completion of several projects, related projects, and then a clean record with the, with the Better Business Bureau and State Licensing, were those, those are things that you checked after, after Tricon was awarded, well, they're not, haven't been awarded yet, but after they were the, they were the low bid, that's when you do that process? Or do you, do you do that process ahead of, uh, oh, if, if multiple people bid on the project? Let's say in this case, I know it wasn't the case, but let's say the three people had bid on this. Do you then check all those things with all three of them, or it's only after you say this guy's the low bidder and then they, you check out the references and all that?
Yes, the mayor's the latter. We would basically check on the low bidder. Depending on the nature of the bid, sometimes the second low bidder.
Okay. Um, that's the only question I have right at the moment. So, um, does any of the council have questions for Mr. Selling? All right. Do we have any public comment on this?
We do. We have Mr. Ibarra.
Mr. Mayor, city council members, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak with you today. It's greatly appreciated. Thank you, Mr. Selling, for what you do here for the city. Uh, I appreciate that very much. I think most of you are quite aware of my position on this particular bid. And I want to make something really clear to begin with, and that is that my issues with this bid and how it was done has absolutely nothing to do with the, uh, sole low bidder in this, which was Tricon. I, I'm not sure who they are. I'm sure they're a reputable company. That's not the point. The point here, and, and really the, the purpose of a competitive bid, is to invite qualified bidders to provide products and services at the best price possible. We're supposed to be competitive, and in this particular case, for the taxpayers of this city. The, uh, we believe, as, as you have seen in our previous correspondence, that a C fifty-three contractor license is acceptable. Um, if you could look at your neighbors up in Elk Grove at CSD, you could look at Lowdi. Uh, you could look in Tracy where we're completing a project similar to this at this moment. Aqua Source is a company that's been in business for twenty-seven years. We're, uh, C fifty-three contractors. Uh, we specialize in this particular area. As some of you know, there's quite a bit that goes into building a swimming pool. And a C fifty-three contractor is capable, licensed and can legally build a swimming pool from ground up. Okay, that includes anything from excavation to the plastering to, you know, tile and, and so on and so forth. And going into the mechanical room, uh, where we do heaters and, uh, the associated venting and so on and so forth. There's nothing in the scope of work, uh, that's presented by the City of Galt that we would not be self-performing, not legally be self-performing. I deal with public agencies all over the state of California. Our company's based here in Galt by choice, frankly. And we have another location down in Southern California in Fullerton that handles our operations down south. We deal with hundreds of public works agencies around the state. I can't think of a single one that has not, for a scope of work similar to this, that has not allowed or even preferred a C fifty-three contractor to bid this job. Mr. Selling pointed out that the intent was to open this up to get as many qualified bidders as possible. Fact of the matter is, there was only one uncontested bidder. And that uncontested bidder's price was significantly higher than the proposal that we had given the city less than a year prior. Um, the idea is competition. And, and quite frankly, we feel like this, the City of Galt and unfortunately, the Public Works Department missed on that one. And we think it would be in the best interest of the taxpayers in this city to put this project back out to bid and allow C fifty-three contractors who are qualified C fifty-three contractors. And as part of the qualification process, it's actually written into your bid itself. You would have the opportunity to review each contractor's license, their experience in these particular types of projects, and decide from there whether they were, you know, whether they were the low bidder or not. Um, I'm here primarily to answer any questions. You've seen a lot of my correspondence and so forth. And, uh, my position is, is pretty firm. Uh, I, we, we live here in Galt. We do business all over the state of California. So this means a lot to us from the standpoint of the fact that we're a business based in this city. But we also are, are part of the tax base here. And we have family here. We have friends here in this city. And we just, we look around and we want to make sure that they get the best absolute value. I can absolutely assure you that, I, I can absolutely assure you that if this bid was put back out onto the street and you allow the C fifty-three, qualified C fifty-three contractors, that were licensed public work contractors as we are under the Department of Industrial Relations, I assure you, the city would save tens of thousands of dollars on this project. Any questions on that?
Are those the only two, uh, licensed classes that would be considerable for something like this? B and C fifty-three or?
Well, I.
I'm not familiar with.
Okay, a C, a B, uh, let's, let's put it this way. If you're having a room addition put onto your house, generally speaking, the contractor that came out and did that room addition would be a B, a B contractor. That's generally who would do that. And so general contractor that has the ability to license other contractors. Some of us have variety of different licenses. We have more than one license as well. Some B contractors also have a C fifty-three license. That may be the case, um, actually with Tricon. I'm not, I'm not, uh, exactly sure. But a C fifty-three, a, um, an HVAC license with, I'm, I'm not sure what the classification, uh, number is on that. But probably an HVAC and a C fifty-three and, um, and a B would, would qualify. But you want to make sure that they have the experience. And again, I'm not indicting Tricon or whoever they are that were the low bidder. They may very well be, you know, very qualified in this project. The point is that we want to open this up to as many qualified bidders as poss- possible.
What range of, are these the only two, or is there a wider range that could be considered?
Could be considered for this project? I would say, uh, potentially, you could be, maybe do an A contractor's license, an engineering contractor, potentially a B contractor. contractor, potentially a B contractor, C-53, and then probably an HVAC. I think it's a C-4 is the number for the HVAC license. Those would be the ones. And to preclude those other licenses that are qualified, it completely defeats the purpose of going out to a qualified bid. It's that simple.
I think the only question I would have is C-53. I think you already stated tonight and also in your email that other, you mentioned CSD. You mentioned some other agencies that are familiar to us. Those agencies, to your knowledge, I did a little research myself, but they also generally accept a C-53.
Correct.
And I know this is just a preference. I know that it's been clear that Public Works, you know, has the, I guess has the latitude to, at their discretion, feel that they wanted to ask for a B. To kind of go piggyback on to Councilman Papinell's comment, just for the public, I have a C-7 license, which is low voltage, so we do phone and data wiring. So generally, I would have a client that would call and say, "We want to do a tenant improvement on our medical office, and we want to do all-new wiring." We would go in and work and do that project, but the tenant could also, the customer could also just hire a general contractor, and that general contractor would come in and just end up calling us in. They basically add cost onto that because they're managing the project. That's right. So B's like a blanket, and then you have your specialties, which are C-53, C-7, and so on and so forth.
Exactly, yes.
So I don't have any further questions for you, Mr. Ibarra. Does any of the other council have any questions for Mr. Ibarra?
No, I have more of a general question about redoing the pool itself. It seems originally it was going to be just the heaters, and now we're talking about two separate things, but it could go out to bid to do both, or is that going to be a separate item altogether?
That's Mike's question.
I think this is on, hopefully. Yeah. So to answer your question, council member, right now, this project, again, due to the urgency at the time to get the pool heaters replaced and the pool open for the season before, you know, in May, by May, this was kept separate. There is another pool project to replaster the main competition pool. It's at that point, you may, well, I don't think, you were on council, I'm not sure, but about two and a half years ago, we did the replastering of the smaller, you know, kiddie pool, as it's often referred, at that time. And so now the main competition pool needs a replastering, and so that's a separate project, again, because it didn't have the urgency that this one did, and so that's why they were split up. But that's one option that the council has, if you elect not to go with staff's recommendation, would be to potentially combine the two projects and then rebid it as one full project.
If it went back out, would you prefer that it went out as one full project or separate? Because, and I think it's, you made an important point, that previously we were under a restraint of time, and now we're going to go past our season at a lower temperature, but then have to have the project completed by November 1st. And so does that make it difficult for one contractor to do both projects? Should they be separate, or should it be one?
It really, it could go either way. There isn't really a preference. I mean, if we were to rebid this project as Mr. Ibarra is requesting, then we would simply just, you know, essentially change the date, so to speak, and put it out to bid with a, you know, probably a B or a C-53 license requirement, and just go. Because, I mean, there's really not much more work than that to it. But now if we're going to roll it in with the other separate project, we just got to make sure that everything is, you know, there's a lot more loose ends basically to tie together, if you will. So I would say it could go either way, though. You know, it's where staff is.
May I make a comment? And I do agree with Mr. Selling, believe it or not, I agree with you on this one.
Okay.
Well, before you respond, Mr. Ibarra, I actually have a specific question that just popped up. You said that the reason that it was split apart in the first place was because the heaters, we wanted to get the heaters done so we could get the pool open for the summer season. If we combined this bid together, would the work take place separately from each other? Because what I'm thinking now is if we combined them, to me, I'm just thinking, could this possibly mean that the pool would not be able to get this work done and reopen in time for the pool season? Or would we postpone the plastering part of that? Would we split the project in half, even though the same company would bid on both? How would that work?
Yes. So what we do is we call out an order of work, and so we would call out the order of work for the existing heaters to be removed prior to the November 1st deadline, so that way we stay, you know, in the good graces of the Air District, so to speak, and meet our responsibility with them. So we would just put it in as far as the order of work, but it would still be one project, and, you know, depending on, you know, who was a successful bidder, they would still have to do that order of work.
Right. But I mean, would we do the heaters so we can get the pool open and wait on the plaster? Or would we just go ahead and do it all at once? And if we did them all at once, in your opinion, or maybe Mr. Armando's opinion, or Mr. Ibarra is being an industry professional, is that going to take us into the pool season and jeopardize the pool season?
We would not expect it to jeopardize the '23 pool season, no.
Mr. Mayor, correct me if I'm wrong, but we're going to go ahead as is until the pool season's over before we begin any work, correct?
Correct.
At a reduced temperature.
Okay, got it. That is, makes a lot more sense to me. Okay. All right. One last question, I think. I'm sorry, you go ahead, Rich, I'll go after.
So I have a couple, Mr. Ibarra, you're going to have to help me here, because I'm, I don't do construction.
Okay.
I don't quite understand at all. So let me ask this. I think I understand the difference between a general contractor and a C-53, although I don't really know exactly what a C-53 can do. You said build a pool from the ground up.
Sure, absolutely.
And I get that. If you're building a pool from the ground up, and you were to put in heaters into an enclosure, a full enclosure like a building, how would you, how would you do the roofing?
Okay. Let me answer your question, first of all. If we were going to be building a swimming pool, it's different than building a building. If we're building, let's say, for example, this project included, we're going to knock down the building that all of the equipment is in currently, we're going to destroy that building, we're going to completely level it, and we're going to build a new building, then you want a B contractor. And then they would hire a C-53 contractor to come in and do the pool, more likely, to come in and do the pool portion of it. They would build the building. If you were going to have, like I said earlier, if you were going to have a room addition on your home, you would get a B contractor, and they would have their carpenters, and they'd have their roofers, and all the other people on there. If we're doing any major roofing work, if there really isn't any major roofing work on this, it's incidental to the project, so that's clearly legal for us to do the minimum amount of work that's there in the roofing in this particular project. But to answer your question, if you're building a new structure, then you, we're not going to build a structure. We're not your contractor if you're looking at building a new structure. Then you probably want a B contractor's license, then they'll hire the specialties under him. But you're looking at this project that clearly fits within the scope of a C-53 contractor. There's nothing in this bid that, and the scope of work for the bid, that does not fall into the, we're doing projects like this and much larger. We're doing one right now, today and tomorrow, we're finishing one almost exactly like this in the city of Tracy. We just finished one, we just finished one four times its size in San Jose, and that was done on a, actually an energy project, a 4217 energy project, where we showed an ROI in less than six years. So this is our specialty. You can look at C-53 contractors to kind of give you a little bit of information, Mr. Lozano, and many of us, if you look at a C-53 contractor, we are allowed to do multiple functions that fall into several different trades. If you're looking at a plumbing contractor, they do plumbing. If you're looking at electrical contractor, they do electrical. If you're looking at a C-53 contractor, we do plumbing, we do electrical, we do the heaters, we can do the associated venting, we can do the excavation, we can do all of those various trades under the umbrella of a C-53. If you think of a C-53 as being a, really kind of a general contractor for the building of the pool and all the associated equipment, that's who we are. But as far as coming into structure and building buildings and locker rooms, that's not what we do. The things that we do are exactly what's in this bid, sir.
Okay. So I think I'm getting a better picture here. So if there becomes a situation, let's say, and again, I'm just, I don't know that I have the verbiage correct, but let's say you have to change out electrical to a more standardized, or more current electrical outlet.
Sure.
Are you licensed to do that?
Yes, sir. As long as it's associated with a swimming pool. I'm not going to come into your house and do your electrical upgrades. If it's related to a swimming pool, all the electrical that is associated with a swimming pool, all the plumbing, all the HVAC work that's involved in a swimming pool, yes. As long as it's associated with a swimming pool, we absolutely can.
Okay. And then I have a question for Mr. Selling. Who in these, who on these projects oversees the quality of work that is performed during projects? Whether it's this one, or the pool plastering, or whatever it is?
Depending on the nature of the project, but I would say for this project, it will be public works staff. We have an on-staff inspector and engineering staff as well.
Okay. I don't have any other questions.
I would just like to say, Rich, just real quick, when it comes to pools, I'm actually glad to hear what he says, and it reminds me that being an electrician, there's a whole special set of rules for pools that don't apply basically anywhere else in houses or industrial or commercial. There's a whole different specialized set of grounding, distance, electrical can be next to a pool.
Bonding, everything.
Right. It's all very particular for very good reasons.
Right. Exactly.
Anybody else have anything?
Go ahead, if you're...
So, you know, I can really appreciate everybody's, well, I'll just put it, honesty in their opinions and their feelings about the matter. I, personally, I feel like I would be doing my job a disservice by not asking this to go out to bid, potentially save the money. I realize that it's, you know, it's not coming out of general funds in one fashion or another, but we can still save some money, and I think we should take the opportunity to do that. I don't know how my fellow council members feel. I also think that it probably should go out to bid as two separate items. If one company can, you know, bid both of them cheaper, all the better for both the city and the company, I guess, but it also gives the opportunity for each company or any company to do the work separately if it should happen to be beneficial for the city.
So I'll be real blunt with my position here. When I was first contacted, first had contact with Mr. Ibarra, he said that he could do this job for $100,000 less, and that's my job up here. Well, okay, if I got a chance, I can save $100,000, I better start listening. My next series of questions, which led to, I think, a series of meetings, was, are we talking apples and apples? Because that's a pretty big percentage difference. And I was disappointed, to say the least, that at the end of those series of meetings, I was still sitting with two things that both can't be true. And, you know, we're put up here to make decisions, and I'm, you know, for the first time between here and eight years on the school board, I'm a hung jury. I can't come to a conclusion, because, like I said, both things can't be true, and we got smart, educated people on both sides, and I'm stuck. So I have voiced before that I'm not one to meddle in the staff's matters, and I'm not one to micromanage, and going out to bid would basically be, like I said, the hung jury, where we just got to go start over. You know, not because I've come down on one side or the other. It's just, that's the situation where we are that couldn't be worked out.
I'd like to make comments, so, and I, I understand completely what Mr. Papinell said, and to me, I don't even want to, I'm not even, it's pointless to get into the he-said, she-said part of this, because, again, we have educated people on both sides, and it's not productive to even go down that road. I think what I, based my thoughts are, is that when we look at, you know, people question, well, could it be cheaper? Because is it an apples with apples? Well, again, I've been a contractor 26 years. I can see the difference between a B and a C, there is a cost difference. If I went into a client and wired their office, you could be looking at $15,000. If a B contractor was hired just to oversee the project, it could be $25,000, because they have to make money by overseeing the project, and that's where your cost could possibly be, you know, possibly, I'm saying, we don't know, but that's where you possibly see the price difference. I only look at it through my experience as contractor in that perspective. Compartmentalizing this on a different point, I am, the fact that we only got one sole bidder is a little discouraging, and I know that's not the first time this has happened, but, you know, the idea is we are here to make decisions to look out for taxpayer dollars, and I feel, and this is my opinion, regardless of what Mr. Ibarra is saying, I feel that by narrowing the, by saying, you know, it has to be a B contractor, you probably are excluding possibly two or three C-53 contractors that would love to bid on the project. You know, there's really no way of knowing that Mr. Ibarra's company is going to be the low bid. If we were to, if the council was to decide to take this back to bid, and he was allowed to bid on that project, he may find himself that he's not the low bidder. But that's not really what I base my theory on, my thought process on. What I'm basing my thought process on is two things. One is, I think we would get a wider range of bidding, potential bidders, by having a C-53. Two, based on my research and my phone calls to other cities, including Elk Grove, that C-53 is widely accepted, and on much, on projects that are actually larger than what we're doing. I couldn't even find a single jurisdiction, actually, that I called. I didn't call all of them, but I called several, that only, that required a B. And again, I know it can vary. And the third thing is, and I think this is, it's not what I based my decision on, but it does kind of get me a little bit, is, you know, we are talking about a local company. It's my understanding that there is some sort of relationship with Mr. Ibarra's company and Parks and Recreation, that he's done something for Parks and Rec with the pool in past, I don't know what. I've never met Mr. Ibarra before tonight. I wouldn't even have known him from Adam on the Street. I've never spoken to him. But I think that, you know, we do this thing in the city of Galt where we talk shop local, and we preach shopping local, and unfortunately, you know, there was a project recently where we had a local company, the longtime Galt company, who unfortunately was the high bidder on a $200,000 project by basically about $2,000. And the rules are that they may, we had to go with a low bidder, which was an out-of-town company. I think if there's any opportunity we have to be fair and allow local companies to bid on projects in the city of Galt, that we should allow that as long as it's a fair process. And so for that reason, I would support pushing the project back out to bid and see where the chips lie, and that's what I will be asking for tonight from my council members.
Mr. Splendario, because we have the unusual circumstance of having just four votes here tonight, what happens if it's split?
So if it's a split vote, essentially, it's going to effectively table the item, because the item has to come back, because we're under state orders. It won't pass tonight, and it would have to come back without any alternative direction. However, staff wants to come back with a recommendation, and that would be up to staff and to figure out if they wanted to recalibrate that, maybe for a full council. Two-two effectively just tables it. That's the effect of it. It won't pass. And that would be true either way. If it was a two, if it was a motion to approve, or a motion, and an alternative motion to reject, and if it was two-two either way, it would just effectively table it. And I also just want to say, Mayor, make sure we go to public comment.
Yes.
Or call it open again before we close it.
Just one last question from you, Mr. Ibarra, and if the council has any other questions, we're going to let you sit down so we can deliberate. Should this project be consolidated? Do you feel that other C-53 contractors, such as yourself, or even your company, would still be interested in bidding the project? Should it be consolidated into one piece?
You're referring to the plaster, replaster of the pool as well as the mechanical work? Is that what you're referring to, sir?
Yeah. That all that falls under a C-53.
We, yes, it does all fall under a C-53, and we could bid it, but with all due respect, my recommendation to the city, frankly, would be not to do that. We were asked over a year ago if we would be interested in doing a replaster on that swimming pool, and my recommendation was, actually, I referred them to another contractor that specializes in this thing. As you would know, as contractors, you know, as C-53, I pointed out that we can do anything from, you know, the excavation all the way to the mechanical stuff. The fact of the matter is that not all of us do all of those things, okay? Some contractors don't have plaster crews, some contractors only have plaster crews. The way that I would approach this is I would actually split them up, because I think the reason I say that is not for my own selfish purposes, is because I think the city would get more bang for their buck that way. If you went out and you bid this thing as a plaster job... If you went out and you bid this thing as a plaster job, you'll get C-53 contractors, and maybe B contractors too, that specialize in that area, where we don't have a plaster crew. So if I were going to do that job, we specialize in the mechanical room. We specialize in the stuff that really is in this bid. That's what we do, very, very specifically what we do. So if we were gonna do this project and bid it, I would have to subcontract the, and here you are again with a B contractor idea, where you're actually, I would have to make money, I would have to make money for supervising the plaster crew. So there, you're adding more cost to the city. And that's why I declined to bid the resurfacing of the pool previously, because I didn't think it was in the best interest of the city to use us, because we would have to go out and subcontract somebody. So I've gotta make money, so that's exactly to your point, sir, is that I would split this bid up in two, and allow C-53 and B contractors to bid them both separately, frankly.
Do we have any other question? Does any of the council have any crucial questions for him, Mr. Abara? Okay, thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
Mike, I have a question for you, actually. If we were to hire a B contractor for, if the projects were combined, and we hired a B contractor, hypothetically, would that B contractor most likely would call a C-53 contractor, such as Mr. Abara or anybody, to come in and do the heater work? That's hypothetically.
Hypothetically, I would say it'd be more likely that they would.
Likely, okay.
It wouldn't necessarily be the case, because I can tell you, the bidder that we have now, Tricon, they have a C-53, they also have a Class A license, so, I mean, they can pretty much do everything.
But it's theoretical, it's likely.
Correct, it's gonna depend on who would get the bid, so.
Would it be likely that a B contractor would subcontract a C-53 to do the heaters, and then have a different subcontractor come and do the plaster part? And maybe even have another subcontractor come do the electrical part?
Yes, that's definitely possible, as Mr. Abara noted too, yeah.
Okay, all right, that's all I had, Mike, thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Do you have any other additional public comment on this?
We do. Harry Wintle?
Harry Wintle, from Galt. I was almost falling asleep, and Mr. Abara got up here, and he got everybody, you know, thinking. Just a couple of questions and comments. First one is general. You hear it a lot, you know, it's like a little fear thing, and it's probably real. And that is inflation, and if we do it later, it may cost us more, it may not. So a question for Mr. Abara in the industry, or for your company, I don't know, you know, in the industry. Do you guys write in?
Mr. Wintle, this public comment is for you to address the council. If you wanna chat with Mr. Abara, you're welcome to do that offline.
Sure, okay, so the question would be, that you might wanna find out from Mr. Abara, if in their contract, they put in a clause that says, if inflation kills us, we get to do something to raise the price. That would be one. And then, in a difficult situation like this, which it is actually kinda difficult, but it's pretty common in its own way, everywhere in the world, and I think Mr. Lozano touched on it, and that is, you know, if you have a good, tight specification, are you gonna risk anything with one contractor versus another? Is there gonna be something in that contract that says, okay, you know, per our contract, this is something that just came up. Your spec wasn't tight enough. Now, you're not gonna know what the other guy would've done, so that's another risk that you have. And then, I guess the last comment would be, if there's an advantage, a price advantage to linking these two contracts together, I don't see why you couldn't go out to do the pool, go out to do the mechanical, and if somebody says, I can do them both, but if you let me do them both, I can give you this kind of a deal. So you have other bidders, just on the plastering, bidders like Mr. Abara. It's gonna be just on the mechanical. You can say, well, this other bidder, low guy, Mr. Abara's bid, if he's the low guy, or whatever, add them together, you know, I don't see that there's a big difference. Now, there's two contracts, maybe the attorney might have to work a little bit harder on those two. But, you know, it's a significant amount of money, he looks like he works pretty hard on everything. You know, he's right on top of it. So I guess those would be my comments, I don't have any answers or suggestions, but I think those are things to think about. Any questions for me? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wintle. Do we have any additional public comment?
No more public comment.
Online, nothing online?
No.
Council?
Yeah, I just have a couple of comments, and part of what everybody up here has said has resonated with me. I certainly understand the position that staff has taken in terms of the B contractor. If, here's where I struggle. We just heard in a previous item tonight, that we've had to repair, and repair, and repair, because something wasn't done right. And in my deliberation earlier, and going through the staff report, and reading Mr. Abara's communications, and having had that experience when that came up earlier in the conversation, in the meeting, it really jumped out at me. I don't know whether a B contractor can do a better job than a C-53. I don't know if they get into tearing these heaters out, that we're gonna find some significant structural damage that is gonna have to be weighted on by a different contractor to do. And that's a possibility, we're removing vents through roofs, or removing, potentially removing plumbing. I mean, I, the picture showed me a ton of plumbing and electrical. And so, again, I'm a little torn, just because I know that Mr. Abara has been very thoughtful in his communication, and in his position. And certainly, our staff has taken a position that is certainly, you know, in their minds, in the best interest of the citizens as well. And so, those are just some of my thoughts. I don't know that, again, that a B contractor, well, in this case, and we have a B contractor that does this for a living. And so, it's really a question of whether or not we wanna go out to bid and have, you know, it, the bids come back at a, because at that point, it's public, you know, it's a public bid process that's governed by law. We can't say, well, never mind, we wanna go back, if we go through that process. And so, I chew, I'm torn. It's, usually, it's a lot easier to make decisions, but I'll just leave it at that and listen to what my colleagues have to say.
I think you actually raised a good point about contractors in general. And considering any contractor, you know, if they've been in business for a period of time, they're gonna have a reputation, and certainly references you can check. And that's something I considered when deliberating over this, and I'm satisfied that both companies could do a fine job.
Yeah, I would say that some comments, you know, saying that, you know, the B contractor does this for a living, well, I mean, I think all parties involved do this for a living. I think that, you know, notwithstanding, of course, of course, the disadvantage here is that, you know, Public Works has already done its due diligence behind the scenes with Tricon, because they were the low bid, the sole low bid. And so they did that. When I asked Public Works, you know, previous in our meeting, if they had looked into Mr. Abara's references in his past work, they said they had not. Because they, that wouldn't be something, again, which he reinstated tonight, that's not something that they would do at this juncture, they would do it after. Again, it's, yeah, there's always the question that something could happen to me. If I, you know, if I bid a project for a customer of mine, and they say, well, you know, we want you to do all this work, but you also want, you know, a fiber optic run, you know, from this building to this building, there is a chance, you know, because we don't have a fiber gun at hand, we would subcontract that to another company and bring in someone who'd do fiber under our umbrella. That's how subcontractors work. So is it possible? Yeah. But I think, under the C-53, as Mr. Abara stated, they are experienced, and everything has to do with pools, whether it be plumbing, electrical, roof insulation. I mean, if I was to ask, and I'm not gonna, I'm not asking him this, but if we were to ask Mr. Abara, how many pool heaters of similar to this has he done in other places? I would guess that he's probably gonna name at least, you know, a handful, if not maybe two handfuls or three, I don't know, I mean, based on the references I checked. So I think what we don't wanna get into is, I don't want this to turn into, you know, we're all specu-, it would just be unfair of all of us to speculate that Mr. Abara's work's gonna be inferior to Tricon. I mean, Tricon's not even here tonight, and there seems to be some defending of Tricon, and they're not even here. I think it's a little unfair to discredit Mr. Abara, because we have no grounds to do so. All I know is that we have a sole bid, one bid, and the idea of a competitive bidding process to use to get two bids. We don't even know if another bid, two or more, I wouldn't even know if another bid's gonna be $2,000 cheaper, or $5 cheaper, or $80,000 cheaper. And regardless if it's grant money, or if it's taxpayer money coming from our general fund, I think it's my duty to do my due diligence and allow that process to take its course. Now, if we go out to bid, and if we were to push this back to bid, and we had three bidders, and one of them was Mr. Abara, and another C-53, and one of those other bidders was the low bid, obviously, Public Works has to do their due diligence, and they have to check licensing, they have to check bonds, they have to check references, they have to check all the things that are required under that bid, as they would do for any process, to make sure that they are actually going to, you know, put before the council, this is the low bid, we've checked XYZ, we are confident that they are a competent company, and that's how it works. So I think for us to sit there and question whether or not why Mr. Abara's company is, you know, is shady or not, I think is just not really in our scope of...
I have a question about that, I don't think I've heard that at all.
Well, I...
That they were shady.
I didn't, excuse me, sir, I'm speaking, when I'm done, I'll let you speak. I didn't say that any of the council members say he was shady, but I think we're just, there's been some comments made drawing into question his work. So that's all I'm saying. Mr. Lozano, go ahead.
Okay, so I have a different interpretation of what I've heard tonight. And what I've heard is that we have two different types of contractors. I don't know who does what, other than what I've been told tonight. Personally, I don't know who does good work, quite honestly. The point was, is that if you have a B contractor, and in this particular case, this B contractor has shown the ability to do all the work, I don't know what Mr. Abara can do, other than what he said. And I'm sure his work is just fine, you're not in business for 20-something years. And so, Mr. Abara, just so I'm very clear, I have no doubt that you probably do great work being in business that long.
Mr. Mayor, may I speak?
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna piggyback on the comments that were made a few minutes ago. I don't think there, there have been no disparaging comments in this proceeding about Mr. Abara, or his business, or his work. The issue is, he has an issue with this bidding process, and he's bringing this issue before council. I think both of the firms in question have sterling reputations. It's the process that's in question. So I just wanna make sure that's clear, okay?
Well, I was referring specifically to the comment that said, it was said, well, we have a B contractor here that does this for a living, and then we have this guy. And based on that, the assumption would be that this guy doesn't do this for a living, and this guy does, and that was where I drew the conclusion. So I apologize if that was a misinterpretation of what kinda I heard, and I know that people can interpret things differently, so I apologize for that. I, again, I think, and to your comment, Mr. Heinz, and I, you know, again, I didn't wanna get into the he said, she said stuff, because it's really irrelevant. We're looking, I'm just looking at this compartmentalized. But the fact that we had a staff report that named Mr. Abara by name and his company, and in that staff report said that he made misleading comments, or whatever, well, that is the opinion of Public Works, and they're experts. But also, Mr. Abara is also an expert in his field, so we have two, you know, people's opinions. But it was a public staff report that was presented that anybody in the City of Galt could read, that, in my opinion, cast a little bit of a negative, like, oh, he made misleading comments, he made whatever. And to that, to me, I think was inappropriate that it said that. It should've said, we had another contractor, and we met with him, whatever. But to name him, and basically, name him in the report saying that those comments were misleading, or inaccurate, or whatever, I think was unfair. Because he, obviously, he was able to come speak tonight, that's the process that people can do. But I think that it was unfair that he didn't have a chance to respond until, I mean, you know, in the staff report, it's there. So the fact, Mr. Heinz, you said that nobody has made anything, I think that's inaccurate, because I think the staff report speaks for itself that it said that.
Well, if the staff report is factual, then there's been no disparaging comments. We covered all this information in the subsequent meetings, the series of meetings that we've had with Mr. Abara. And I don't wanna, again, like you all said, get into the he said, he said things, and let's stick to the issue.
To that point, sir, I think that's an excellent point. If we don't have any further productive comment, can we move to a motion? And I don't...
Thank you.
I don't particularly know exactly how to frame it, you know, but I would...
I call for the question. Pardon? Just call for the question, which means, let's, the...
Let's, okay, we'll call for the vote, or we can have an alternative. Alternative, the vote is what? Maybe I should frame it that way. The question is what?
So the item is to approve the bid, or reject the bid. And so, Mike, I believe it's stated, sorry, Director Stelling, can you sort of lay out the...
Yeah, so the recommendation by staff is to award the contract to Tricon as the low responsive and responsible bidder. The alternatives for council, should they not wish to make a motion supporting staff's recommendation, would be to consider giving staff direction to either rebid the project, exactly as was done this first time, i.e. no change in scope. And, or the second alternative would be to essentially combine this mechanical heater replacement project with the pool replastering project. So those are a couple of options available to the councils.
Frank, we could also move, or, yeah, we could also move to put it back out to bid as separate items?
Yeah, so you could...
That's the first option, yes, correct.
Yeah, okay, I misunderstood that, then.
So you can reject staff's recommendation, and come up with an alternate motion to put the items, put the item back out to bid, or have the item combined with the plastering item, and put them both out to bid?
As one project.
As one project. So you have options.
All right, well, I'd like to make a motion. I move to reject staff's proposal at this time, and instead, go back out to bid, allowing C-53 contractors to bid on the project, and to keep the heater project separate amongst itself. That's my motion.
So just one item, Mayor, just to clarify, you're asking for an added C-53 bid process with...
I'm asking first to reject staff's proposal.
Right.
And then I'm asking for us to go back to bid for the project, to be inclusive of C-53 contractors, and to bid the project specifically, the pool heater project, the original project that was presented to us, alone. That's my motion. If there's no second to my motion, then the motion dies.
If discussion is appropriate, motions on the table, but not seconded, I wouldn't want to handcuff the experts. If there's a savings to doing the projects together as an economy of scale of some sort, then I wouldn't wanna prohibit them from combining them. So, you know, that's my only hangup with that, that particular motion is to still give them the option to look at the best way to save the city some money.
And that's why I mentioned putting them both out to bid, so that all contractors can bid on both portions if the best contractor happens to win both portions of that bid, so be it. If it's separate, you know, that gives, to me, the most flexibility.
Right, and I think our question tonight is, approve the bid, approve this bid, this project or not, and then... project or not, and then, if we choose not to, we're giving them general direction to go back out on this, and it's up to them to consider the options, if there's a better way to do it with combining projects.
Well, I think to answer the combining part is, it's really subjective to say that whether you split, if you, if you, there's actually just as much potential that the overall cost is less, if they're bid separately, as it is, is that the possibility that you would save money by doing them together. There really is no clear cost savings to do them together, because the reason that is, is because you might have a B contractor bid on both of them, and then he subcontracts one piece, because he doesn't do that, and then what happens is that cost becomes more, because he's managing that. Again, I'm only coming from experience, because I am a contractor, it's, that's how it works. Typically, it'd be like, if I hired an electrician to do electrical in my house, and then hired a plumber to come in and do the plumbing in my little remodel, potentially, I could save a lot more money than just hiring the general contractor, and have him do the whole thing, and hire all the, because there's a cost involved in that, in that over. So there's, there's potential both ways, and it's, it happens both ways all the time.
No, that's what I understand, and I understand there's, there are C-53s out there that are capable of doing all of the mechanical, the electrical, all of that, and the plaster altogether, without a sub. Now, Mr. Barra doesn't have a plaster crew himself, but if we're opening this up to C-53s, I'm confident there are C-53s out there who would be able to do this all under one roof, with no subs, and maybe save us some money. Maybe there's not, but I think that Director Stelling should not have his hands tied, if that person exists, and can come in with a bid that's going to save us money, so.
Well, staff has given us the option to consolidate, that's one of the variable options that we've given, and I, my motion is to not consolidate, to just keep this as it is. That was suggested, because now we have a lot more time, we're not under time constraints, so they want to do that. So, if, the only reason by doing that would be a possible cost savings, but again, I don't think that's unfounded, I think that is unfounded, I would like to just keep it the way it is, and take this particular item back out to bid.
So, for clarification, may I have misunderstood your original? If we, someone seconds your motion, and we vote on it, and it passes, by default, there will be separate bids for each portion of the work to be done, correct?
Under my motion, that would be--
Correct.
Correct, okay, then I second the motion.
Then I would offer a replacement motion--
Okay.
--to put this heater, the bid, back out, but to direct the Public Works Department to bring us back the most efficient for the entire pool project, whether that's two separate, or all under one.
Does everybody understand his motion?
Yes, and I, I may go out of order here, so Mr. Attorney, allow me. Mr. Mayor, on your motion, does that include B contractors as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I want to, I want to be very clear, that we want to allow Tricon, the sole bidder in this particular, to have ample opportunity to rebid. There's no reason why not to let, even an A contractor, I'm just wanting to allow a C-53, which is generally accepted, which is the lower license out of the three--
Yes. And Councilmember Papinow, I'm assuming your motion also includes the potential for a C, but you're, you wanted to basically combine replastering and HVAC in one form or fashion?
I want both B and C-53, and if anybody else, because I'm not an expert on it, all capable contractors to be eligible, and I want to give Public Works the leeway to, if it's the most efficient, most beneficial to the city, to combine the projects, after they do their research.
And I'll second that. All right, so we have a, the original motion by myself, seconded by Councilmember Vandenberg, we have the alternative motion, an alternate motion proposed by Councilmember Papinow, seconded by Councilmember Lozano, and we will vote on the alternate motion, or the alternative motion first.
And if I may, just to give a procedural caution to this council, again, if there's a 2-2 on either or both of these votes, then this is effectively going to come back, and it's effectively tabled, just wanted to make that clear, as you weigh in on your vote.
So what you're saying is that, if we, if it's a split on the first, on the second motion, that's it?
No, if it's, if it's a split on both--
Okay.
It's coming back.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
All right, can we have a roll call on the second, on the, on the alternate motion? Ms. Hubert?
Councilmember Papinow?
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
No.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Farmer?
No. Split vote, 2-2. Please have a roll call on the second, on the original motion.
Councilmember Papinow?
No.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Lozano?
No.
Mayor Farmer?
Yes. Also 2-2.
So, so for clarification, again, this effectively tells staff what? To bring the issue back at some point in the future, because this issue is effectively tabled. So you'll see it at some point on a future, when I have a chance to chat with Director Stelling, and we'll come back with another bid in some form or another, either be it combined or separate, and brief you at that time. But meanwhile, our patrons will have to deal with 77-degree water this summer, and luckily, it gets hot down here. And we'll come back to you when Director Stelling and I have a chance to reformulate--
This effectively delays the project.
Exactly. And if we have to notify the Air Resources Board, we will.
All right, moving on to, actually, we don't have any further public comment. Tina?
No public comments.
All right, moving on to item I, communication. Do we have any communication this evening?
Not this evening.
All right, item J, city clerks' report.
Nothing.
All right, item K, comments by staff. Mr. Heinz?
We're working to piggyback on some of the issues that we discussed with parks earlier today. We're working with Supervisor Don Nataoli and his team, and we are submitting a proposal to access the county's ARPA funds, to help pay for playground equipment for our five or so playgrounds here at the city of Galt. And I just wanted to let council know that I'm working with the supervisor on that, and I'll let you know how that progresses, but I talked with the supervisor yesterday, and got the parameters of the submission. So I'm looking forward to working with the supervisor on that.
Good news, thank you.
Sure. Next up, our community development director, Craig Hoffman.
So, the next council meeting, May 3, we'll be looking at the housing element, we have that notice. I know everyone's excited about it, but I think what you're going to find is it's not much information, and the conversation could be as little or as long as you'd like. I'll leave that to you.
Very good.
Thank you, Craig.
Have a great night.
Thanks for the smile, Craig.
Hey, I'll do 30 slides on it if you want, Tina will kill me, but, okay.
Yeah, yeah, we better get him away from Tina right now. Amy Mendez, our economic development manager.
I have nothing further to add this evening, thank you.
All righty, thank you. Our finance director, Matt Boring.
Good evening, I have no comments tonight.
Thank you, sir. All right, Public Works Director Mike Stelling, anything, Mike? Okay, very good.
Just a couple of things to make council and the community aware of. The 4th Street ADA enhancements project is pretty much complete, I think we've got a couple of real minor punch list type items, what we call, but if anybody hasn't seen it, I encourage you to go down there and check it out, the new rails are in, and I think it looks really good. So. The other thing I wanted to let the council and the community know is, gosh, probably close to two years ago now, we put in a battery box over at the police department, and it's been a great program for people to drop off the batteries, and make sure we dispose of them properly. We had gotten a grant to purchase that box, actually, we were, we had enough money to buy two, and we've been working, and basically COVID derailed it, to find a second location, but we've just located it over in the community park, right near the fire station, so you can pull in there, there's a few spaces, and it's right under a light, so even at night, you can hopefully feel safe going there to drop off your batteries. So now there's one on the east side as well, so just wanted to make everyone aware of that. So, thank you so much.
And last, but certainly not least, Police Chief Brian Kalonowski. Whoa, sorry.
It's okay, it's been a long night.
Yeah, I hear you.
I only have eight or 10 things, Tina, so, let's start. First of all, I wanted to update the council on a couple things. First, we have some activities coming up related to enrollments at the county, state, and federal levels for Harmon or Graywall, who we lost, I mentioned earlier. So on April 28, we will be up in Sacramento for the county memorial, we'll be in Sacramento on May 2 for the state enrollment, and then there's a contingent from the department of us going to Washington DC from May 11 to the 16 for Police Week, which are numerous events we're attending, with the enrollment on May 15 in DC. So we have a lot of work coming up, related to honoring Harmon, and getting him enrolled in those memorials. And then, lastly, we had some promotions I want to announce. I had sent a communication last week. Rick Small has been promoted to captain effective on Monday, April 25, and then I've promoted John Rocha to lieutenant, and Brian Azavito to lieutenant. John Rocha will assume the watch commander in patrol assignment, which will give us some coverage on traditionally, what will be something like Wednesday through Saturday, on some off-hours, and then Brian Azavito will be assuming command of the support services division. So, that's a first step in many promotions that we have, we're running a sergeant's testing for internal promotions that will occur ultimately by the beginning of June, testing is going. The applications close April 25, the testing a month later, and then some interviews with me, and some decisions. So, a lot of exciting things going on, including budget development. So we have numbers dancing in our head, but with that, I think I'll turn over the remaining time that I have to Armando, who looks more than excited to come up, right?
I do.
Do you want me to stand up here with you, too?
I probably need that, after the information I'm going to give council.
Okay, very well, go ahead.
Thank you for treating me like the city attorney, and for getting me. And I apologize for everything my department caused tonight, but I have some more bad news. With the spring season coming, the rain, the heat, the rain, the heat, you're going to see, and possibly receive, quite a few complaints regarding the weeds. We are keeping up with our obligated once a month on landscape, and twice at the parks, so I just want you to know that we are still doing that, even though it may not look like it at this point, as we enter the grow season. It's not going to look pretty, I just want to give you warning, but we are working on it, and so, I just wanted to let you know that.
Armando, I have a question. What's the status with the weed abatement, like, on the streetscapes, and the medians, and things, that's not your department, or?
The streetscapes are mine. If it's in the street and sidewalk, depending on exactly where it is--
Like center medians, and all that kinds of stuff, with the weed abatement, on that stuff?
Is there landscape on there, or is it just cement? I know it's a hard question to ask, but--
Both?
If there, basically, if there's any plants, something planted there, it's mine.
Okay, so do, I mean, I know that a while back, we talked about weed abatement, we had a little bit of a sidetrack with that, is that back on?
We have two people studying for the test right now. One should be, we actually are looking for a testing site for him to take his test, now he's studied enough.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Director Solis. City Clerk Tina Hubert, anything?
Nothing.
All right, city attorney Frank Splendario?
Nothing.
That concludes staff's comments, hopefully.
All right. Thank you, sir. Moving on to item L, comments by city council members and future agenda items. We'll start with Mr. Papinow.
As always, thanks to all the staff for the hard work you put in, even if we then come up here and mess it up for you. And then, thanks to all of the public, it was good to hear about the food pantry, and some possible housing stuff finally coming to some concrete plans that we can take a look at, and that's about all I have tonight, thanks.
All right, thank you, sir. Councilmember Vandenberg?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, staff, for putting up with us this evening, it was interesting. Appreciate the public comments, I know they had to go about their business, but it's, I'll say the same thing that basically I said last week, or last meeting, is that, you know, it's the one opportunity to speak to staff, city council, everybody, all at the same time, people should take advantage of it. And then, a couple of other items, back on November 16, 2021, I had asked for support, we got support from staff to draw up a hard copy proposal for the lighting of the water tower, and, don't get me wrong, I know you won't have an answer right now, but, staff, Mr. Heinz said he would be happy to meet it with the citizen, and request the lighting to be discussed specifics, and bring it back to the city council. I'm just, I'm just asking that you could--
So, we went out and spect what it would take to light that water tower. I then asked you, how much does the citizen have to contribute? The amount that the citizen could contribute, it doesn't come close to what's needed. And so, if we were to do this, and I, and I can always come back and present this to council, if we were to do this, there would need to be an appropriation from the general fund, in order to make this doable.
Fair enough. I guess we can't make that decision, or inform the citizen if we don't have that number, so that's all, that's all I'm looking for.
That's one of the reasons I wanted to chat with the citizen, to allow me to give them some context, because that, that water tower is sizable, and it's going to take some lumens to really, to really make it shine. And, and we did reach out to a vendor who does that kind of work, but I wanted to have that conversation with you, and that particular citizen, and, okay, here's what we're looking at, and the amount that you're putting forth is great, but here's what we need. So, maybe we can put our heads together, and maybe there's some other community resources that we can, we can talk about that, but I wanted to have the conversation.
Okay, I'll chat, I'll chat with the gentleman, thank you very much.
Sure.
A citizen reached out to me about the homeless problem in the Dry Creek area. Staff was kind enough to provide a background on all the different entities that provide, from private to federal, who have authority over the different sections of the land. In the Dry Creek area, just coming home this past week, I noticed there was like a 20-foot tall stump of a charred tree. We've had multiple fires in that area, and I, granted me, I know it's, it's not the city's responsibility, it's not our land, it's, some of it's federal, some of it's railroad, some of it's Delta College, the golf course, Arcadia Homes, the city of Galt, and I know it's difficult, but I am honestly concerned for both the citizens of, the homes and the citizens of Galt, all the way from Cordoza 2, all the way to Highway 99, and the homeless people that chose to live in that environment. You know, we can't prevent that, but over the, over, I lived there, and I've lived there for six years, and over that time, the vines have continued to grow and spread, to a point where they're actually starting to pull down large portions of trees, and make what I, in my layman's terms, is a serious fire hazard. We no longer just have vines, we have, you know, I mean, literally half a tree got pulled down, and now it's dead, so now we have just this accumulation of fire hazard. We've had, last year, the field burned, in the, in the middle of the field, it burned, we had three fires in there. I know the homeless people are trying to keep themselves warm and cook food. I honestly feel like it's going to be a matter of time, not if, but when. So I'm asking my fellow council members to support the staff, a continued effort to reach out to all the entities, to come up with some, some long-term solution for cleaning out that area. And I know that's not an easy thing.
I understand. So, can I ask, Mike, Armando, whose, whose land is that? Or Craig?
Mayor, I'd appreciate if you could indulge me on this.
So, by my estimation, where that charred tree is, that's-- So by my estimation, where that charred tree is, that's in Sacramento County. Where the people are, that's San Joaquin County. Now, I understand about the concern about the vegetation. That's fish and game and US Fish and Wildlife. That's habitat and although we may view it as unkempt, it's habitat. I would just say. If there's direction, we can look at it, but it's not easy. It's not us going in there. In maintaining that area. It's private property.
Yeah, I I fully I fully understand that. I really do. I also feel like it's.
It's not an easy solution because.
Right.
It's not us and so.
I guess I guess.
It's us asking other jurisdictions to do something.
Right, and and I guess I can't drive. I drive that by there every day when I go into and from work.
I I do. I understand.
I feel like it's just I cannot just keep driving by it without asking and being trying to be proactive.
I understand, but I guess we could try. Reaching back out to San Joaquin County and Sacramento County, it's.
So something that we do have control of, kind of piggybacking on what he was saying. I think a concern is, and I've gotten some citizens too that live in the Creekside area, you know, the Creekside, you know, my actually, my daughters live in that neighborhood. They don't live as close to the back of the perimeter like Mr. Vandenberg does, but. I think there's a real concern about fire hazard and we know we are. We've had a lot of growth right now. We we can't even keep stuff mitigated to a point we like in town. I can only imagine how tall the grass and all that stuff's going to be all back on that Arcadia property and all around down where the little walking trail is. And over the same, so can who who has to be the one in charge or who whatever that needs to get that grass cut.
Sure, with Arcadia, they have disst out their entire field. They're fine. We're currently working with CSD Fire in the applicant that owns the land south of Chase Drive and south of the original Creekside. We're working with them, but that'll just be the field up to the high water mark that is the trees, so we could get that taken.
That might that might be a great point along the housing.
Correct.
Creek, if those areas can be addressed.
We can we can do that.
Much better defensible fire zone.
How are we going to do that?
That is owned by private property. They either do it or CSD Fire will maintain that area. They they'll maintain.
So.
Open fields and then they charge the landowner.
So the folks who have private property, is this a code enforcement action?
It is. And we're currently working on that, but that'll only take us up to the high water line.
But I mean, there's there's grass area and I haven't seen it, but I mean, there's grass that's probably God knows how tall on certain areas. And once it turns dry, you're talking about a fire hazard probably up within, you know, 20 feet of someone's, you know, property.
I would say.
A home, a subdivision.
It's been a very different year, the same issues that Armando's dealing with. CSD Fire is working right now.
So who in CSD Fire do we call?
Ruben is out tomorrow to take a look at sites.
May, I'm going to just jump in here a little bit with a bit a little bit of point of order. We're getting a little bit into something.
Yeah.
The guts of something that should probably be agendized and discussed.
Yes.
Want to have further discussion. And this item itself is for future agenda items. It's not for. Just direction to staff on to to do certain things right now. It's a good discussion. It needs to be had, but just to clarify for this in future meetings, this part of the agenda is for future agenda items. And and the back and forth robust at this point's a little bit, a little bit too much.
And it and it's it's on me because I I had some intellectual curiosity about solving this. Councilmember Vandenberg, would you like us to agendize this for a future discussion?
Please and thank you.
Okay. Mr. Mr. Hoffman, you're in charge of that staff report.
We're going to have some words.
I apologize now.
No, I agree. Yeah, I agree. Yeah, if Mr. Heinz, if you could just talk to the powers that be and report back to the council on this particular item. I don't know that it needs to be an agendized item. I think it just needs to be, if you could look into it and get back to us. Right? Sorry, Rich was making a comment to me. I didn't hear what was said. I'm sorry. Did I just repeat?
I asked the council member if he would like it agendized.
I said please and thank you. Oh, okay, then I'm fine with that too.
Okay.
Yes, I'm fine with that too.
And we can bring it back as a discussion item.
Okay.
Okay.
Could could I just ask one question? If we're going to bring this back as an agenda item, can we ensure that somebody on that day or prior to? That somebody of decision-making authority from San Joaquin County, Sacramento County, the CSD. Maybe even Assemblyman Cooper's office for Fish and Wildlife are present and active in this part in participation in this. Because it'd be nice to have decision makers in the room to be able to do that.
Director Hoffman would love to do that.
Does that conclude your your comments, Mr. Vandenberg?
And and just for the record, I think there's a consensus among the council for this direction, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, moving on, Councilman Councilman Lozano.
Yeah, I will go really quick. Thank you to everybody that came out and spoke. Sunshine Food Pantry folks, David Herbert, it was nice seeing you. Haven't seen him in a little bit. The nonprofits for the event sponsorships. And Mr. Barra and Mr. Wenzel for for your your comments as well. I want to thank Mr. Hoffman and his crew, actually really him, for his timely response and resolution of a. An issue issue that a citizen citizen brought up in regards to truck idling in between a business and this gentleman's property and. And Mr. Hoffman, you did an awesome job getting that resolved and even on, I think, on a day off, so thank you. Thank you for doing that. And then just lastly, the if you didn't get a chance, you missed a gem in the Historical Society Extravaganza and Kite Day. Two weekends ago. It was a great attendance, well organized. Thank Janice Barsetti. And the Historical Society as well as Gail Weber for their work on putting that thing together. It was a huge event and I think. I think our youth commission did pretty well on their. Their fundraiser out there too, so that's all I have.
All right, thank you, sir. I'll be quick as well. Just echo my comments, Craig, about the issue with the truck. Very prompt, as always. I appreciate that. Thanks, staff, for the reports and regardless of the dialogue that happened up here tonight. We always appreciate you guys giving us your professional opinions, even if we don't always see an eye on those. And I want to say yes, the Extravaganza was very well attended. I was able to go briefly in the morning, but I had to go to work after, so. Youth Commission did do very well, so it was good good day for them. Chief Kalonowski, I'm sure you're probably already going to do this, but is it possible for you to send those dates for those two things for Officer Graywall? To the council, just so we're aware in case we wish to attend or were possible for us. The first one I got was April 28, but the others, maybe if you could just email those to us. All right, thank you. Thank you. And the only last thing I would like to mention is I I would I would ask that even though there is current dialogue going on with with the group that came and spoke tonight about the project. I would like to 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 make sure that this is moving along if we could get some regular updates whenever there's dialogue with him. If you could just a quick, brief update by email. Would be just something super simple. Hey, we met today. This is where we're at and just kind of update us on the dialogue and what's going forward on that. On those meetings. I would appreciate. Is that is that okay? Okay. All right, with that, then I will adjourn the meeting at 10:19.